Evening, everybody. Today is the 7th of April. This is 7:00 PM. It's not one of our regular scheduled Select and Meetings. We have specific agenda items tonight. I'm sure it'll be just as entertaining as always. I'd like to remind everybody in the audience we're being recorded via local cover.
Chat.
Cover Halifax.
Access.
Access cable. So you're on candid camera. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to ask if we'd all like to stand. The pleasure ladies put the flag. The pleasure ladies put the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Yes, the board members, does anything they'd like to add to the agenda?
I just want to remind everybody that Saturday at 10 o'clock till 2 o'clock, we will have a plot for Hops, which is a home research rebuild, the Hops playground.
Is this happening?
It's this Saturday.
Hopefully it'll dry out.
So my vote is sort of squishing, so the lawn will be.
We're gonna have, so you can win $500 if the cow does his plot on your square. And then we're gonna have little farm animals for the children to pet, a lot of little petting zoo and pony rides and face painting. And it's a great way to spend the day with your family, plus raise money for a great cause.
This will all happen later?
This will all happen at the Town Hall Green at 10:00 AM on Saturday. And it's gonna be a beautiful day. It's gonna be sunny and dry and, yeah.
You believe the weatherman, right?
Yeah, she's one of the, yeah, the ones that.
Even if it rains, it'll still be a great day.
Two, are you gonna head out?
Yeah, rain or shine.
No, good. While we move on, we get some time. Our first go-to appointment is 7:10. We've got a little time to get some, do some business.
Move to approve the payment of the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 83 for $338,831.54. Then the warrant number 84 for $50,678.19. School warrant 85 for $295,764.81. And withholding warrant number 86 for $123,834.23.
Second.
Is there a police payroll on this? So I'm staying in the police section of the warrant.
83.
Other than that, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's, that's it, huh?
Review ATM, STM, and.
Do we have minutes? No, we're gonna wait on that? Okay.
If you wanted to do a couple of things, we could help you. Grant applications for the school roof project. Might as well since it's a more of a letter of interest to the school roof project. And.
We need to vote on the.
There are copies in your folders of this packet. What you need the board to do is there's a language on page 19 of the packet. In that little box, it starts off saying "resolved."
Yes.
This is always the sticky. So what it says is "Resolved, having convened an open meeting on April 7th, 2015, prior to the closing date, the board select an Alphax in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 10th, 2015, to the Alphax Elementary School located 464 Plymouth Street, Alphax, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The replacement of the roof has been identified as a priority, as appearing it is no longer by law. And hereby, the board respectfully acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form to Massachusetts School Building Authority, it in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, awarding a grant, or another funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority amidst the city, town, or regional school district demanding an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority." So really what this is, is the first step. In essence, we're waving our hands and saying, "Yes, we've got a project. We want your help."
That's a statement of fact. Today's date, April 7th.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
We'll make that.
That's the, except the result.
Yes.
The text is what the motion would be.
Yes.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Is it all assignment?
No, in fact, what will happen is that votes reported, certified by the town clerk will handle that tomorrow. I'll be signing pages four and twenty of the board in the town.
You don't need to vote for that either?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Let's see, Chapter 90. If the board members that we had, the north end of Route 58 paved last year. Bob is preparing to get the southern end, meaning, I believe, from South and Linden Street, past intersection. Now it's a foot and line done.
There's a portion of the north. So they go back over the other end of 58 and follow Pablo's there?
I think that when we feel Pablo's will help us. We have Pablo's money also to do that particular thing.
So this is a request to the state for us to proceed to this?
Correct.
Is it a single signature or?
In this case, yeah, in one, one of the forms, the project request, it says signal, there. Single signature, right here for the chair. And then in the other one, it would be all three Select and under duly authorized municipal officials.
Okay, and this is a request by the highway? This is what they're looking to do?
Right.
For this fiscal year? We're in?
They're hoping to do that this, this coming month and May, yes.
Okay.
And there were three copies that each will need to be signed.
Okay, so I will make a motion that maybe I'll first let you sign the Chapter 90 project request form, and then I will also make the motion that the board sign the Chapter 90 environmental council list.
Second on board. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Back to plot for Hops.
Plot. So I'm gonna just hide on this.
Pick a line, yeah. Hops for Hops or plot for Hops? Because there's probably several plots, so I'm pluralizing it. The group wants to know if the board was interested in being celebrity line judges in that if the results are questionable as to which square the posit has been made to, that someone will have to judge that. And the group was asking if the board members were interested in participating.
I can absolutely be there. I let them know that I could be there. And I think I am pretty qualified to figure out.
There's only one page?
We will not ask why you are qualified.
You have three pages.
The three of them again?
There's three on this one, right? On the first one. You might have to sign out, right? You have to sign three cards of each, and then you have to sign three of each.
Oh, the three of those two?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll be there. It could take four hours.
Yeah.
Or it can take 20 minutes.
Oh, we can give them a little slack. They're gonna take their best time. Your boy.
Do you think you'd be able to attend?
Necessity. At 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock, what did you say?
I gotta work.
Okay.
10 to 2?
It's, I would say 10 to 2.
Yeah.
Can I have that back when you got? No?
Yes.
I have to, John, I want to.
Couple things. I don't need the board to take any action, just giving the board a heads up. We'll talk on the 14th. I know that you had the letter from Tom Mayes, the building inspector, he came here on the target on June 30th. But we're going to need to start revving the firing process engine up, so I'll talk to the board about that as to advertise any deadlines, go over the job description, if the board wants to screen community at all. But I'll talk to the board about that next week.
Good. I think it's a good idea to talk also about the hours, perhaps maybe having a conversation with Quentin. I know that our current building inspector also works there. You know, I mean, I think it's an opportunity to sort of look at maybe regionalizing the position. I mean, it's just.
The board can talk about that.
Yeah.
So are you considering sort of saying that 40 hours, we don't need the 40 hours?
I don't know, but it's a.
I mean, a salary for it. It's a 40-hour drive down there.
Correct. Which we haven't paid for yet.
What I'm saying is I think we should look at it again because, you know, where we can find savings if for some reason.
No, no, I agree.
It's worth looking at. I mean, it may not.
Try to add on the regionalization meetings to. I'm sure he'd be interested in that as well.
Anytime we can, I don't, I don't wanna just, I know we're trying to save money, but I don't wanna guess hours.
No, I understand. And maybe we look at it and it's really 40 hours, but I think it's worth looking at.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna, is it the last of quickie or is it?
Just to know that if you get a call about a street lighting Spencer Drive that got knocked down during the snowstorms back during winter, I got a call, I got a call about it yesterday, following upward national grid. The whole pole got demolished and is gone. So we're having to have the whole pole. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Was it from an accident?
No. All I, because all I know is it's down and needs to be replaced.
So that's just an.
Yeah. And if there's anything else, I'll talk to the board after our appointments.
Okay. We have a 7:10 appointment with the solar farm and our committee.
We love to hear what's going on. This is great. Adam Winkler is chairman. He's not gonna be here tonight. He's late. But if you'd like, Jerry Joy, I'm on the committee also, I can give you an update as to where we stand right now. And probably we'll have a lot more information come May for the town meeting. We met two weeks ago with the Mass DEP and they gave us a lot of good information. A lot of things to look out for in the process, and we're going over that right now. We've also talked with the highway department to try and get, to have them give us a layout up there as to what they need to operate, so we're not putting out a proposal saying we want solar panels all over the place and then they can't operate. And we also don't want to have, we're gonna get a lot of dust and dirt and everything else on. So hopefully by the next week, we'll be meeting up there and getting that lined up. We also wanna put out, in the proposal we put out, hopefully within the next three weeks, we'll have it going out there. We wanna look at the elementary school. Can we put panels there? We wanna kind of maximize everything that we can do in the town.
You mean on rooftop?
On the rooftop. See if it's feasible, what has to be done to it? If the roof has to, we know if the roof has to be replaced or it's in the process of doing that there, maybe we can incorporate it into the build-out. Be some savings involved in that also. If we can put solar panels on the town bond, if that's worthwhile. We wanna maximize everything and do it in one application. And we want to put out a proposal where there's gonna be probably three portions to it. One, we can build out the site ourselves. Two, we can have it leased, someone else will build a design deal and we'll lease it back from them. Or we just have someone else build it and we get our electricity at a reduced rate for the next 25 years. Each one has a cost element to it. The first one, we're probably looking at, the solar farm itself is gonna be about 2.5 million of build-out at a total cost. If we do it ourselves, we have to have, come up with some upfront money, get a lot to hire engineers, design work, and then we are at risk to build it. But we do get the maximum benefit over 25 years. Second way, we have someone else come out, build it, and we lease it from them. We get a good benefit back from it, but our costs are gonna be fairly high. The last one is, they do everything, cost the town nothing, and we get our electricity at a reduced rate. So there's three portions to it. Talking with the Mass DEP, no one has built a farm by themselves yet, meaning for the fact that we've gotta come up with a hundred thousand dollars upfront, and then we're at risk, and we gotta come up with a warrant for 2.5 million to build it. So these are the, these are the different discrepancies that we're looking at. What is the best way for the town of Alphax to most bang for their buck? So hopefully we're gonna have that there in a couple more weeks we have to go through this year.
Have you researched the individuals that came before us that proposed from the solar panel farm back there? And what information have we found about them as far as all individual business?
The two, there's, there was one company that came.
Right.
And they, this was probably about a year ago. And I think it was on one of the drawing, the landfill drawing.
Right.
And he had put a note on there saying that it was feasible, it wasn't feasible to do it financially feasible. I did contact him and I, the only reason why it wasn't financially feasible to them, that company, is they don't do anything under a one megawatt power. Most of their build-outs are from minimum of one up to four. And where are it about? Point eight. And I think it might be a little bit less after we get the total space that the highway department needs to operate up there. The second one, we looked at it, it's a leasing possibility, where they would dwell, they would build it completely, no upfront cost on our end, and then we would wind up leasing it back from them. But we don't have enough, enough information down the line at this point, so we can really come back and give you an honest recap.
I was just curious as well, how they, if they would react to two proposals.
Well, we're starting to check with a couple of towns too and see which town. Most of the towns have done a, they just take a lease where they buy their power. And they, they get guaranteed electricity rate, probably nine to 10 cents kilowatt hour for the next 25 years. That's a good savings for the town. Most of them go that route.
Yeah, there was somebody in here, is that the one you were thinking of that was in here? Nine or six, nine or six months ago that was talking lease with option after 10 years?
Yeah. That one there, it's, it's a good option because the town, I think, that at least deals over the course of the time, the town gets about 200 million dollars, or 250,000 dollars a year in revenue, which is a good revenue for the town. And, you know, we're looking at that. Everything is open as to what we can, what we can get, but we're not at that point yet. But we wanted to give you some information here tonight so you can get on the dock when it comes up.
Any room to put solar panels on the board panel?
Don't go there. It's tired enough with the antennas out there. I'm just asking.
So I noticed on your email that you were looking for an article for $100,000?
$100,000, when you're looking at the three positions that we're putting out in the proposal, $100,000 would be if we were to build it ourselves.
Okay.
That's not, we're not saying that that's the way it's gonna go, but we wanted to put that out there, saying that if you do go in that, that route, that direction, we're gonna need about $100,000.
Well, you should know that we do not have $100,000.
I know that. I know that. I want, but that's why we're coming up with three proposals.
Okay.
We wanna say that, okay, this one here is gonna cost us, but we get more money in the long run.
So you're, what you're saying is you'll have the article on, but you'll just sort of get people to look at it and then you'll pass over the article?
To look at it until we, you know, I'm hoping by the time the town meeting comes, we'll have better answers in proposals.
Right, but we still wouldn't have the money then.
No, I know we don't.
Okay.
I know we don't. But when you look at it, and that was one of the things that come up in the meeting and saying, you know, the town doesn't have this kind of money upfront to go with.
Yeah.
But we still have to look at it. We got a proposal saying.
No, it's totally, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear that this isn't anything.
Oh, yeah, I'm totally clear.
Yeah, and it's really, it's great to be able to bring it forward so that people are aware of it and we can pass over it, and then we can still continue with what other things.
Yeah, but we don't want us to have the article shut down right at the beginning when it comes up and say we want $100,000. And then a month turn around, leave.
I love the articles. I was your person.
No, what you would be doing is saying, you know, I quote, you know, I'm gonna pass over this article, but this is the reason why we had it on there. We were hopeful that we were gonna be able to have funding.
I mean, even if there was funding, it's kinda hard going over something that, like you're saying, you need a couple more weeks just to try to nail more information down.
To get more information down.
And then town meetings in, say, five weeks, and you're not probably gonna be there enough to even sell it.
I mean, we're leaning on having someone build it in the town, get the benefit from it, and not have the town have the responsibility on it. But when you look at how much money is available, you say, well, we gotta look at this.
Yeah, sure, I know, absolutely.
This is good money, but.
I mean, it is an investment. It's, it's, there's a return on this money. Not talking like the schools are a return on your kids. This is more a return on your utilities and your expenses.
Right, and you should still continue to use it as an option. We're not saying, no, that's not a good idea. We're saying that unfortunately this year, this May, we wouldn't have the funding.
No, that's why we wanted to have the different options out there, but that's where the goal, I was coming from.
So you want the ability to at least present to the town, have the discussion and understand that, you know.
Because you're right, it is an investment.
Let's a cash cow, let's a cash cow drop something out on the plots for Hops.
Now, what are those? What's the value of those?
$500 if you win.
It's also important that we become very knowledgeable, because as landlords, we need to know what's going on, what's supposed to go on if it should go on back there if we do decide to lease it somewhere, so that we can understand if something's not going the way it's supposed to be going.
But, you know, the state has a lot of steps that you have to put in, in position in order to do that. You gotta have a maintenance contract. There's a lot of things you have to do before anything gets turned over, because they're very well aware of what's happened in the past, and they've put these regulations in there to protect the towns, so that you know exactly when you sign up, you know exactly who's responsible for this and who's responsible for that. Because who's gonna mow the grass or keep it clean? You wanna make sure that it's maintained properly. The people that are up there understand what they're working around? You want the fire department to know what's up there, what they have to do in case there's a problem? So, I mean, there's a lot of things that have to, have to go into it for the town itself, whether we own it or someone else is building a farm for us and we're just leasing, leasing it.
We really appreciate all the work that you've put into it.
A bunch of guys in the committee are doing great. Guys and gals.
Is it more attractive, the more locations and scope?
Well, what we're looking at is, I think, the town uses, I think, if we just do the landfill, we're probably gonna get between 70 and 80% of the town's cost energy bill. If we can include the elementary school or somewhere else, maybe we'll get up closer to 90 and 95%. And at the same time, looking at the, the school, if there's something we can do with the roof, incorporate that into the build-out where we can save some money, maybe worthwhile.
Okay. Was there any other place you were thinking of?
We're just asking anybody, anything, anything that the town owns, building-wise. If we can put it up, if you have a piece of land you wanna put solar on, it's gotta have three-phase power to it. Thompson Street has three-phase power going down there, which would be bad, but it's.
Could be, on a serious note, could we put all on our squad cars and the fire truck for solar and it would save us on gas, wouldn't it?
Then we'd have to look at a different.
Right, right.
I'm sure that, I'm sure that the solar cow would cost a little bit more than it's worth to get back on.
Fine. Just gotta not have cloudy days.
That's all.
Thank you. Sounds like you got quite, quite a lot done in such a short period of time.
Well, we got a lot of good people working on it, so it's, we're getting there. But I was hoping we'd have more to give you, but we still need a few more processes to go through to make sure we know what we're doing and setting up a proposal. The other thing we're gonna do too is we're gonna, we're gonna defeat the residents on the street of our drive, have them come to a meeting if they want, because we don't want them to be, say, wow, what are you doing over here? So this way here, they have an idea, what's going on, come on down and we'll talk to you, and any concerns about what might be happening over there, we can sort of explain it.
True.
So we get a letter that we're gonna proposal another next week, so we'll have that along, see if they can tell me.
So how do we, how do we put this on the warrant if we're not really?
You don't put it on the warrant. It's, it's, I mean, you can put it on the warrant and if they're intending to pass over it, I think it's one of the.
Yeah, it couldn't pass though, because then we'll be out of this.
You can move to pass over or take your action, but you can still have a debate about that motion.
Debate about it.
And so there can be.
It's a public forum.
There can be a presentation for a few minutes explaining, this is the article we have here, we know we're passing over it, this is one of the options here, and the other two, we'll continue updating you as to what's going on.
Yeah. So this currently an intent, like I said, unless there's a cash cow comes into town, that's the intent of the article being placed on the warrant. So if that's the intent, then I'd take a motion.
I'll make the motion that we include the article, knowing that it will be passed over.
Well, do we get to open the warrant?
Well, you have.
No, you already have.
Well, still. You have the warrants right now.
Oh, I mean, do we get to open the warrant? It's on there.
No, it's on the warrant.
It already is?
Yes, we're all set.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we're not opening these doors or closing those doors?
Yeah, no. Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Nice, nice. We got four of us.
Charlie, you've got a couple of things that, when we get to the annual town meeting warrant, we have one zoning article, which is to revise the floodplain article. What that is, is listing maps that are attached to the floodplain going on.
You guys stop talking about that. I don't know, I don't know about those stuff.
That's gonna be the root until you let tell. That's going to need to be voted by the board to send that up to the county. So that'll hear how the, Mr. Hope and Karen make a recommendation to town.
There's something we have to do.
Well, there was some question, if you adjustments of it. Well, if you don't, if you don't do it, then.
Questioning, pushing, pushing, it's something for the scenes. And she gets a little bothered with the seat that, we named her Sue that.
If we don't set it up there, then we have, we're on the danger of people not being able to get flood shirts.
We don't want that. Well, I know there was a discrepancy.
Right, and we're still, and Tom Mayes and I are still working on that for Baker Street, Baker Court.
Okay. So we need a vote?
Well, when we get to it, we can do that.
When we get to it, when?
We're going to do the review of the town meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Just on 15 Ocean Avenue, so the board's aware, the junk demolition car has returned. We own that property now through tax title. I notified the presumed owner of the fact that the vehicle needs to be removed and the town owns a landing, doesn't have permission to have the vehicle there. I've also put a note on the car to that effect. However, we have other individuals parking other vehicles on there, and in fact, one of them wants to come and get permission to park a vehicle, regular, normal, plated, registered vehicle. So that person's coming in next week. The question for the board is going to be whether or not it has any interest, oh, yep, whether it has any interest in doing so or not, and if so, what the circumstances or the stipulations would be.
I, for one, either we board the, or with the property up, so nobody parks over the property. I understand that there, just like in avenues there, there is very few spaces, none of the space to park, especially in, in very close, the homes are so close together. But at the same time, we're, we're throwing out a liability if we allow those vehicles, anybody's gotta be on the property. If somebody breaks into us, somebody steals something off of it, or a tree falls on it, prove it's possible.[1635.25] The junk car?
The junk car.
If it's not removed, my suggestion is that we have a total to the owner's expense.
Well, I've informed the presumed owner that in fact we will be doing that starting by the fourteenth.
Perfect.
Is there anything, the Hanson, can we notify them that a resident from Hanson?
It's not their business.
Even though they're from, they're right up.
It's simply not their business. It's our property.
You can commit a crime in Suffolk County, Plymouth County doesn't even know about.
Well, they keep pressing the line over there, you know, they keep coming over the line.
I think one way or the other, the vehicle will be removed. The problem with boarding the property up is sure putting a fence around the property, there's no good way of doing it. The house is in the back, it's open in the front.
Sure there is, you know, you have the department here, both.
Police, police take notice?
I'll be informing the police of that also.
So will I have an answer on that by next meeting?
Yeah. At least give you a status report.
And this is just a jerk reaction to it. I just, I just don't think that we're going to open up that Pandora's box that we went over.
I agree with you.
In the notification committee, I know you had the plan for Mr. Kessinger a few weeks ago, but I really feel that the board needs to actually meet with them if the board wants to have them move ahead with the gardening plan. I didn't know if the board had an interest in having them come in on the fourteenth or twenty-eighth next month. By this month now, it's already.
Do we have, let me just.
We have appointments right now at seven forty-five, eight, and eight thirty.
I hate to have people come in after.
At eight, all right.
So how about the twenty eighth?
Well, we get nobody before that, and we hold that open?
Well, you can put a lot for seven thirty-five.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
So very brief, is that good?
Yeah.
Well, see, and I say this tongue in cheek, as long as they're communicating with each other, you know, about what they want to do, so when they come in, they don't have disputes.
I understand that. Give everybody a heads up that there's an appointment, they're all ready to come.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to know what their plans are. This might not be the only thing, and it just springs here, and it'd be good to pee out.
I know we're going to talk about this later, Charlie, but I just noticed on this list that at eight o'clock, we're going to be meeting with the legislators. Did we invite them?
Yes, you did. You specifically asked me to contact them and said, you want to have an opportunity if they so wish to tell them why you put the ballot question on. And I know that Tom Colter's been talking to me. I really haven't heard anything from Tom Kennedy. And also, I don't know whether he or a representative from his office have tried to come. But I've informed them about the appointment time and such, and so they're welcome to be here.
Well, I know that Josh Cutler is not our representative, but you know, he's also a legislative representative of South Europe. And we can talk to him too.
Well, the board needs to specifically ask him if he wants to come. I mean, that's a tough one, but I have not relayed that invitation because the board asked me to contact the town's legislators. But I'm happy to invite him if the board wants me to.
I think, I think everything that happened, correct? But Troy wants to know.
Yeah, I mean, I'd hate to have him out on a night that doesn't, I mean, it's fine. I mean, we can ask him if he doesn't.
That's the political world.
I know, he was actually here last week during the right to fund, not the right fund. He was there for the Board of Health.
Board of Health, I think, I think he'll come.
Yeah, he was.
I'll invite him if the board wants me to.
Town meeting.
Yeah, but that you have that after we handle our seven thirty.
We're going to seven thirty right now.
Oh, no, no, it just says the meeting session, the one where.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm planning on having the review session.
Yes.
Not this one, obviously, tonight, but the one with the moderator and such, the town council on May fifth. That's a Tuesday, if that's okay with the board. We don't have a meeting scheduled for that night, that's one of our off nights. We have off.
Not this month.
Every week.
Not this past.
I'm fine with it, I mark it and I can.
Michael Troy, is that a fine date?
Yeah, this is fine for me. Yeah, I can't see my crystal ball that far, so.
I understand what the town. So you got seven thirty?
Town meeting review, we used to have these during the day, too. Well, we've had both, I remember most of them during the day. We still got to raise off, right?
For till then, yeah.
But it's hard, I think, for a moderator to be here during the day because it does work. I remember them mostly at night, even from the years I was on the finance committee.
Okay, you got a seven thirty appointment?
Representatives from the school committee and school department.
Great.
And John Cheval is here?
Sorry, I came from another meeting.
It's okay.
You snuck in.
You comfortable back there?
Yes.
Okay.
She's kind of nagging at the door.
So what are we doing here?
You have the non-binding ballot question on here. I know that the school committee and school department had some comments about it. I didn't know if they wanted to elaborate on them. I don't know what else they'd like to talk to you about the question, but we give them the floor.
So Charlie, would you write this non-binding or did John?
John wrote the original drafts of it. I took it and tried to make sure that it needed, it was saying what it needed to be said in the sense of, for instance, a simple, are you in favor of common core? Okay.
Most people aren't.
Well, well, that, and also, let's say you aren't, then let's say we don't have it, what do you get?
That's the option.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to, we've had something, we're having something, we'll have something in the future. That's why I tried to be more specific in the question as to, you know, do you want something to happen? If so, you have to understand that this will happen.
Do you want to be back home?
Well, they asked to come and talk with you, so.
I would think we started with the school committee, if that's.
There's going to be two forums, a spooky meeting voted last night to invite Desi and Dr. Sandra Stotsky and Jamie Gass. It's going to be different nights.
Casey, they, probably most of us don't have the foggiest idea where those people are.
Okay, Desi is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And Dr. Sandra Stotsky actually worked on the committee to validate the common core standards and would not validate them. And Jamie Gass is from the Pioneer Institute. So Dr. Stotsky and Jamie Gass will be presenting one night. And we're still trying to work on, hopefully, having the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education come down and present, hopefully, the last week in April.
So what do you think about your question, John?
My only comment, I said it to Charlie, I don't remember what I asked for once, I'm trying to remember the question. But my only comment was that Charlie mentioned that, you know, are you in favor? I think he called it the common core and park, or to go back to the two thousand and ten Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, I think was the gist of the question. And I, my suggestion was that instead of saying, are you in favor of the common core standards, you know, to say the Massachusetts curriculum framework, common core standards. Since if a voter decided that they wanted to go and do any research, they would not find common core state standards for Massachusetts. They would, however, find the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, which then goes on to use common core instead. And that's just a matter of clarity.
Yeah, so we would, we would take out the part about nullifying the two thousand and ten decision of the department.
No, I was, no, I was not suggesting, I was not trying to change the intent of it at all. But rather to make it more specific as to what the correct title of the current standard is.
You might have say, do you request the state legislature nullify the two thousand and ten decision of the Department of Education, Secretary of Education, to adopt the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks incorporating the common core state standards? We didn't nullify that, of course, then the comma, returning Massachusetts curriculum frameworks to the pre-two thousand Massachusetts state standards.
That's an offer. I, I still have issues, and I've talked to several people, teachers and so on. I understand, I understand what the curriculum is, I'm being wrong. I understand that this data sets the standards. But there's still a lot of people who really don't understand what the common core, exactly what does it do? And I voted to have it put on the ballot, but I still think it's the who's, the presenters or anybody else to make sure that they understand what it is out there. Because it's, those people who don't have kids in school, seniors, whatever, I think we'll have a very difficult time with this particular.
Well, the forums will take place, and they will be on the cable for seniors to look at.
How are you publicize, how are you publicize for them to know that it's on cable? On cable, I mean, how would they know?
Yeah, it will be on the cable.
If they're not regular viewers of the cable, and this, I'm just curious how you.
Probably the best way, once we have a date for the other workshop, because we have a date right now for one and two, I will be sending out a general press release to the media, putting it up on the website and such, having information about both, and then saying, if you cannot attend, these sessions will also be taped for later broadcast on chat.
Right, because this is a question for the entire town, that we'll be voting on it and not just the parents.
And for that matter, I suspect, since we're starting to, chat is also uploading the, our board meetings and such to YouTube. For those people who don't have cable, they can also be able to view it via the web. It'll have a couple of options. And we'll publicize all those ways of being able to either view or be there for the sessions.
So we'll know later?
Yeah, once we have, once we have a date set for both of them. Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to send two press releases out, I want to do one.
So when do you think we'll know on the second one?
Well, I don't know, the staff is working with Desi to come up with a date that they're able to attend in a year.
I mean, is it a problem sending out two press releases on it?
Well, it just becomes a little more confusing, in the sense of it's one subject, it's two events tied to that.
Right, probably people do want to come.
It's redundant.
Well, you don't want somebody thinking that that's the only one.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to delay either, you know, having one, we know.
Well, right now, one of the two, we know, is not until, I believe, May seventh.
May seventh.
So we're talking a month away already for one of them. You mentioned probably the last week of April, so we're talking something more of three weeks.
So we might have one even sooner than that date.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that.
May, sooner than the May.
Yeah, well, one of them might be the last week of April, the other would be May seventh. The press release, my hope will be out, probably not this week, but probably early next week. People will get at least two weeks' notice of both sessions. As we've mentioned, they don't have to attend them, they'll be able to watch them on cable, they'll be able to watch them on web. If someone's paying attention, they'll find this information out. For those people who don't want to pay attention, no matter, you know, hearing on their door won't change anything.
Oh, they have time, too.
Well, I understand that, but I, in a sense, we'll get the information out to people. They'll have an opportunity, whatever their schedules are, to view these.
As long as we're getting that information as best we can with the amount of time we got left. I mean, like, it came pretty quick, so.
So I will make a motion that we, the question should read, do you request that the state legislature nullify the two thousand and ten decision of the Department of Education and Secretary of Education to adopt the common core state standards returning to the Massachusetts curriculum? Oh, no, what did we say, Massachusetts?
Did Charlie?
Yeah.
Is the language.
Yeah, so do your questions.
Do we have that?
No, because I just did this on the fly and I'm operating off what you just.
Good, I'm flying that job.
That's why you pay me for sometimes for, do you request the state legislature nullify the two thousand and ten decision of the Department of Education, Secretary of Education, to adopt the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks incorporating the common core state standards? Then, and since we're saying obviously it's nullify, then it's comma, returning Massachusetts curriculum frameworks to the pre-two thousand Massachusetts state standards.
You said secretary education, not secondary?
Secondary education.
Can you throw the discussion? All is available?
Uh.
All right. All right, done. It's like running a race sometimes with some of us, right?
Get grass on the lawn.
Now the warrant.
All right.
We, and you could stay by all means, but are you all set with this point of decision?
I told John earlier.
Wait till they get out the door, so I'll talk about the Halifax budget there.
I told John earlier, just tougher earlier, that in military terms, he's so short, we could slide him under the door.
This board mission store, the annual or the special? I'd like to ask you a question. How, how are we, because the last I know of the numbers, we were at a quarter mill in the hole, in the rares, and now we're not. How did we get from that? Because I must have missed a lot of those meetings that we got from a quarter million.
Well, a lot of budgets have been reduced.
Thanks, Tom.
Both, I mean, both, school budgets, for instance, have been reduced in terms of the assessment and the totals with the town. We've reduced assessments for Silver Lake, for instance, less than what the preliminary had started with. Revenue interest slightly better. Things like health insurance, we've been able to reduce as we get better mothers.
You know, that's a lot of reduction in those two alone, is it mostly?
Well, no, except just those things. I mean, we'd have to go through a whole, almost a hundred fifty-five line items to show you what happened.
But the ones that stick out the most?
Well, because those are the biggest budgets. I mean, Silver Lake plus Halifax Elementary combined over ten million dollars.
And they came down a lot.
So a lot of the, sorry, other smaller departments or?
There weren't a lot of changes in the really small departments because there's not a lot of money to begin with.
We gave ten thousand, that was the biggest, I think, of the other small.
Yeah, I know, and the fires said they didn't have any.
They didn't.
So was any out of Iowa would be the third biggest? So then it's just the smaller.
Well, some of the small ones, as I mentioned. The health insurance by itself is a nine hundred thousand dollar budget. It's almost five percent, four percent of our budget. We were able to reduce that slightly because we expect the rates, we expected the rates to be up five percent across the board. They now average about just under one percent.
So that quarter's drawn, so pretty much at zero, or we will fund the other side?
I think as of last night, we had, there were somewhere between four and five thousand too good.
Four or five thousand on forty or fifty, which is really not even worth jumping up now.
That doesn't include any cost of living, bad food stamps, but no top billing increases.
The steps are already considered?
We already put the steps, the steps went in right at the beginning of the process. I mean, when we started this process, we knew we had electricity, we had health insurance, we had retirement, we had the steps, and we had another contractual obligations that were already in there, and we have special aid. Those had to be put in first. Veterans benefits would be six, we start with that too. And then, if we had any money left over and we were able to fund other budgets, we'd have possible increases.
Did we kill or keep in what we needed for the IT in this, in here?
We have, the finance committee is recommending a budget that would include half a person.
Okay, and not, no upgrades to your computer equipment?
Well, there's money in that budget for computer equipment, yes.
So that's half of what you originally.
Well, originally, we were going for a full-time person, split between the school and the town. The school, given the budget constraints it was under, was not able to fund a half a person. So we're going to at least start this process, I hope, with a half a person here.
Which was, is that a half?
Twenty hours a week, yeah.
Twenty hours, part-time, it's like a full-time, part-time person.
No, it's just a part-time.
Twenty hours a week.
Yeah, you're not hiring them by phone call, they're actually here.
Maybe here, twenty hours a week, yeah.
And the rate was better, was a little higher than what was at wage personnel? Did you get a better rate?
Well, no, it'd be great one, our grade seven stuff won because again, we had a thing, we tried to fit everything within the budget.
Well, I mean, is it something that you could get an IT guy?
I think so, because it's a wage level similar to someone who was hired over at Silver Lake, it's the same type of work.
Because originally, I think, it was mentioned fifteen an hour for an IT guy.
Right, and we were thinking along those lines, this is closer to twelve, it's similar to one or nineteen or something.
So it's reasonable to get the other?
I certainly hope so, we're going to, if the town meeting approves the budget with this, and then we'll go out and start the hiring process and hope we have good candidates coming for that wage level.
So we're still watching the numbers and stuff, I mean, the cell fluctuations and that?
Right, because I, for instance, the lead decisions on health insurance, this is Thursday. You know, even though we know what the preliminary numbers are, the actual rate's going to be approved by the State Department of Municipal Health Group. The state budget's not final, obviously, the House has not even come out with a budget, the Senate has not come out with a budget, so.
The conservative of the state's numbers are around the annuals. Are you comfortable with all those?
Yeah, we're, there's nobody here, you know, for instance, with the finance committee or the other financial officials, that we're feeling we're being too optimistic about whether it's all about receipts or about state lawmakers.
All right. Which one do you want to start with, annual or special?
I think the special.
Joy?
She's really special, so.
We'll go with the special, because she's special.
We want to get on.
We'll have reporters in the house.
Thanks for coming in today.
We'll be right.
Okay, so I didn't know if I'm leading the church here. Okay, so Article one.
Let him lead this, he's on a roll.
We've obviously received a lot more claimants for veterans benefits. You know, when we get back to the annual town meeting, you'll see that that amount set aside for that line is going up significantly from this year. But that sort of continuing process from this year in that we need more money in budget for the year we're in now to cover veterans benefits. So in addition to a twelve thousand dollar reserve fund transfer that was approved last night, we're going to be asking for a seventeen thousand transfer to line one twenty-seven, the veterans benefits.
So it's a total of nineteen, twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollars to?
Not in town meeting, but because again, reserve fund, we just got the twelve thousand. We need, town meeting will go to seventeen. What I wanted to do was make sure people understood how much money was going to be in the total, including the twelve thousand, because if they only looked at the original appropriation, they wouldn't know about the additional reserve fund transfer.
Article increasing it, that's the difference, the reserve fund. Article increasing it, that's the difference, the reserve fund and then the increase.
Right, it was originally $130,000. We've put in $12,000 so far in addition to the $130, we're asking for another 17. So Article two is from Sandy, um, she had made an accounting error in where funds were allocated to and needed to correct that through this process of transferring the 1600 back into the Southern Street Fields repair and improvement.
I don't understand that one.
I can get an explanation for, from her exactly what happened.
See, there was money, there was not enough monies to do the repairs over?
No, as it mentions, it's correcting an accounting error, which she invented her office, virtual.
To transfer from funds of the summer 160580 to replenish Article 46, repair and improve Southern Field at the town meeting for May 13th in order to correct an accounting error. So we really, you don't know exactly?
I can get that information for you.
And then?
No.
Alright, good, moving on.
No, and, uh, as long as she's corrected, and I hate to have seen this going down the road and all of a sudden we're going to move on to next year's budget, and it wasn't corrected, so. I think she's admitting to that.
Well, it's not that, I just, I don't understand it, and I like to understand it, that's all.
And I will get that information for you. Um, Article three is to put 28,000 more into the snow, I used to count, we are in the deficit spending situation. They can in fact spend the money right now, but whether we do this at the special town meeting or put it onto the recap when we're setting the tax rate, the money has to come in and be put aside for this.
Did we get anything from the state? I can understand they had a special snow account, with the state or the feds?
We have money from the state for pop hole repair. This is a, it's a separate pot of money.
Okay, what about snow removal, wasn't there some kind of money from the?
We, as far as I know, the, even though Rhode Island has got an emergency declaration approved by the feds, I'm not aware that we've got in Massachusetts's, um, emergency declaration approved by the feds, so we're still, as everybody else is, waiting to see whether any money's coming up 95 to us.
I think the departments are ready with the information, they're just hoping that comes in.
Okay.
Right, well, I think Troy was asking whether any, we knew whether any money was coming in or not, but right now, we're hoping.
They were discussing it, this has been, what, six weeks ago, they were talking about the possibility of money being placed in accounts. So no update, we've got ahead now.
So right now, we're in a deficit of 28,000?
Correct.
And?
Yeah, but the snow is melting, come on!
Yeah, and we don't anticipate any, well, it closes going by, so. We'd have to get that money from where?
Well, Sandy has a full list of sources. We're going to need something on the order of about $90,000 to cover the articles at the special town meeting. She's developed a list of sources. Two of them are actually highway department, but not so much highway as in general. Uh, the gasoline budget obviously didn't need as much money as we had allocated, also the heating budget, surprisingly, because some of the buildings are done by heating oil. Also, um, we'll have some money at the end of the year that we can transfer in, to these particular articles, including the snow and ice.
Oh, so that's a positive, right, but not 90,000?
No, they had about $55,000 between the two of those.
Okay, so that's probably, hopefully, where that would come, alright?
Okay, so Article four is electricity, as the board knows, electricity rates went up in November. Sandy and I went through each of the line items, that includes electricity costs, went through this several times, looking at the actual bills, looking at past usage, and came up with the, what we feel are the necessary amounts for those line items to cover the electricity bills for this year. Now, some of those line items, I'll give you an example, the elementary school doesn't spend $4,983,999 on electricity, but we need to put more money in each of those line items to cover the electricity costs that are in those line items.
Can I make a suggestion? You go by there at night, light, and every single light out front of that building is on. Does that really need to haul those lights?
Well, I, I, would have been a good question to ask about 10 days.
Yeah, well, kids think of everything when you have that.
I can pass it on, I, the, I know that, at, many of those lights go off, they're on a set timer, because I've been here late enough when fewer lights are on, I think they're, it's a matter of more of security than anything else.
Well, I mean, I've seen them on a midnight.
Well, I can, I can certain-
The second part of that is, didn't we just get a grant to go and replace a lot of stuff?
Right.
Wouldn't that, take this back out of it?
For the year we're in now, no, because that work won't be done until after.
No, but we don't have to, we're considering a savings over there, so why would, would the savings more than offset increasing the budget?
The savings will not occur the year we're in now.
And this is adjustments for this, correct?
All the special town meetings, all the special town meeting warrants are for the year that we're in.
Yeah, well, I'm just, well, Charlie had mentioned increasing the budget for next year, and that's why I'm having that discussion about it. Well, isn't that supposed to offset, so why should we increase, why should that have to be?
Because I don't believe we're talking about for next year or this month, this year.
Yeah, we're talking about this year.
The raise went up in November, we had budgeted money back in May, not knowing the rates were going up in November. We've now seen what the rates are like, we've seen usage, we've reviewed each of the accounts that have electricity bills in them. We've been, we're recommending increases in those accounts, transferring money in those accounts to cover the increases for those, the electricity.
For this year, we don't anticipate.
Well, well, the bottom line is that special town meeting is this housekeeping article, this is, this has got to be done before the year ends because we can't wait until it goes into the Secretary of State's office to certify it to bring back, so it's going to be done this year. Am I wrong, right?
Well, it's simply a matter that we've got to cover, we have bills, either we cover them for the electricity costs, we either approve them at special town meeting, or we do line item transfers, or we get reserve fund, and we do all those by June 30th. Yeah, I mean, for next year, for fiscal 16, the budgets include necessary money to cover whatever the rates are. And that, but that will be within Article four of the annual town meeting. Okay.
I'm just trying to be aware.
Article five is to put $10,000 into the unemployment compensation fund. We do this, not necessarily every single year, um, we, so, you know, we'll put money in there if we feel during the next 12 months we'll need to have, pay more out than we've got set aside in that unemployment compensation fund. I know the Assistant Treasurer's been working with a firm, I think, that we had hired to review the unemployment bills and such, so that we can have a better chance of ensuring we're not paying unjustified claims from cost or employees from the past that may not be eligible for payments from us, so.
Would that have gone to other municipalities?
Or any other employers? And then number six, the, this is for the general insurance account for $5,000. We have, we paid out basically our entire amount when we paid for our major policies back in February. Um, we have, I think, about $500 left in the account, I'm going to assume. We still have some bonds, town official bonds that have to be paid out when we do the changeovers next month, in May, those expired, we're going to have to renew it also. I want to have a little bit of money if we have any deductibles, we have a lot, whether it's property insurance or vehicle insurance, for instance, we might have a deductible of $1,000, so I want to have a little bit of money in the account to cover those.
And again, Sandy's working over all that, is what we're coming from.
Yes.
When will we, we know that?
The day before town meeting usually.
Well, she has some idea of.
Well, it may be by May 7th, I mean, sorry, May 5th, when we have our review session, or even earlier. Once she has established that, I can get that information out to you. Article seven and eight are the appropriations necessary to fund the completion of work for 2015, both for the algae remediation project and the invasive weed remediation project in Mount Potsapong. We previously had set aside money for those, but I think I've gone through this with the board back during winter, that we don't have sufficient money actually appropriated, so what I'm asking is that the town approve to take the money out of stabilization fund, the MTVE one, which was set aside specifically for this type of work, to get the work done by 2015. It will deplete the stabilization fund down to in the $20,000, $25,000 range. So this will be the last year that we'll be able to do it by this, if we're going to continue to have this work done, either we'll have to find another funding source internally, or we'll have to get assistance from other entities.
Um, I know Hanson put on their article, I think, $5,000 to help out with this.
Brockton, excuse me.
That's okay, you can say it louder.
Brockton.
Um, I think he's, I think, no, it might have been $6,000, I can't remember. Yeah, because at one of the meetings, and that's what they said to help out, we were thankful for that, for sure. And then in presentation, you, you might, what's that?
Well, I wasn't asking tonight for the board to split up the articles, if I do so, and I was thinking more wait until the 28th for the board to split up the articles as to who's going to be doing what.
Well, it came to us a lot of these meetings, too, so you go to most of them? I mean, besides Charles?
Yeah. This Thursday I can't, I have an opioid, I'm on task force meeting in Boston.
I can't because I'm going to be at Bayflower.
Oh, yeah, I, I forgot to tell you, I have an opioid, task force meeting in Boston on Thursday, I can't.
So we still got time to do that, I guess, from Charles?
I did let Paul know I wasn't.
Yeah, I, I, well, I let everybody know I was going to be there.
I guess one thing is, if we're running out, hopefully we'll have a solution to the problem over there, more so than we've had in the past, because now that fund has helped us out a lot.
The fund helped us a lot, also the group, the group that has been working with Brockton and the state and others about improving, improving the lakes and the ponds themselves will be helpful, we may be able to receive one is, we've already got some monies, maybe more money towards remediation of the weeds and allergy and same distills and.
I mean, it seems like more work's been done in the past year, year and a half than in the past forever.
Well, at least the communication is up, I hope, I hope it'll stay that way when we get something done.
So, you know, I don't know how we can help Hanson get that, their article passed to help that pond, or if we could send over a letter to the board of support and our thanks, that maybe we can have that discussion. Or if you could pass on a note, if, I think some, one of the, one of the selectors do go to that meeting anyway, so that-
Yeah, there's also a live.
That's right, Henry, yeah?
He's my friend, Don, I've lost his father, but I don't know him, or me, I mean.
So, alright, so they're on topic.
Well, if the board wants, I'm happy to send them a note saying, encouraged by your submission of an article at town meeting, um, happy to work with you, but, I could certainly send that.
Yeah.
That would be, okay. When is that meeting?
I don't know, I have to, the two, the, the other two I pay attention to are Kingston and progress rates.
I, on that same note, I don't want to get too far, it's Boris Pond, I guess, had a, the fish kill, went to kill.
Yes.
Die off, was horrendous.
Yep, I saw a picture.
They had hundreds of fish floating up.
Why?
Lack of oxygen, the ice was so thick, and with the snow cover over it, they weren't able to get the oxygen flowing. But all the weeds that are dying on the bottom of the pond, trades gases, we suck stuff, you know?
And it's not, it's, um-
It's not moving.
So they just didn't freeze solid in the, in the water, alright.
That's possible, too. Okay, good job.
Okay, Article nine, um, this was a result of a phone call in the last couple of weeks. We had, we have one streetlight on a day or road, it's never been, at least according to records I have, paid for by the town, a private individual's been paying for. That person decided in the last month or two not to pay for that streetlight night long. Another resident on the road then called me up and said, well, would the town be willing to take over paying for the streetlight? Traditionally, if, and the board can strike this article if it wants to, traditionally what happens is if, since we, back in the early 1990s, we turned off a bunch of streetlights, then, because of the art financial situation. Then during the mid and late 1990s, we eventually turned all of them back on. Since then, it's been the policy for the board, if someone wants to have a streetlight turned on and the board's willing to put the article at town meeting, then we put the article at town meeting, in the sense that we don't just put money right into the streetlight account, assuming the townspeople shouldn't be aware that we're now paying for more streetlights. Each individual's streetlight we turn on, since then, has gone to town yet. If the board wishes to, it can leave the article on, if it doesn't wish to, it can take it off. But that's how we've done this.
Statement will be consistent, we've done in the past, and we think that will continue, I think.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think it helps, it, it's, you know, certainly a deterrent for, for crime and assists. People that are, when the kids get to stay out of home, that the streetlights are on, they could, they have to come home and the streetlights are on, they'll, they'll stay out all night, right, is that how that works?
Most of them don't want any lights on, they don't want to, you know what they do.
So Article 10, you already obviously talked to the Southern Field Committee earlier tonight, that's $100,000. Um, Article 11, Silver Lake District operating budget, they had, just as we had snow and ice expenses, they did two. They need $160,000 to cover the additional expenses above and below on what they had budgeted for the year we're in now. They are asking for approval to take that from the excess and deficiency account, to do that, since they have another source of funding. It does not increase our assessment for the year we're in now, it has no direct effect on our fiscal 16 budget.
No ill effect on the next year. A chunk of change, though, huh?
Yeah, clear moves, and parking lots.
Um, Article 12, we have been, we have a revolving fund for our cable access, and we've been taking the money out of the revolving fund as it comes in from Comcast, but there was a limit as to how much we could in fact expend from that revolving fund, a limit of, not what we could put in, but we could expend of $100,000. Therefore, we still have money in the account, I have to check, we may in fact get another check, literal check, between now and May 11th. But to take whatever is remaining in our revolving account, to be sending it down to CHAP for the year we're in now. I'm going to talk with the board about the cable access in the annual town meeting, because I got a phone call late today about that, too, so, but that's a different situation. But for the year we're in now, I just want to take whatever money we have remaining in the revolving fund and send it down there, which is what we had agreed to, as part of the setup of public access, we had specifically said any money we got from Comcast would be sent down to CHAP.
Okay, can I ask, uh, why was it proposed by Silver Lake Reason School Committee?
Well, because they propose everything, so that means they got to figure it out. Thank you.
So were we switching from, from the revolving to a different?
Right, and that's why I don't, which is why I will talk with the board about that when we start working on the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Then Article 13 is that with the doctor retiring, we're going to have a vacation accrual that needs to be paid out when he leaves on June 30th. Sandy contacted me late today, that amount will be $10,240.
Somebody just texted me, they're in a meeting, and they need me to answer them.
Who?
They want to know if they can use the town during on June 6th, but they can't, because we have a pop watch.
And who's looking for?
The, um, high school booster softball, want to do a car wash.
Would that interfere with?
Because the parking and such, they're remaining, they're going to play, they want to do it in the parking lot, so we're going to need a parking lot.
Well, maybe they can ask the elementary?
Well, so that's where the race actually is.
Oh, the race, too?
Yeah, well, the racing, yeah, the pop is the Saturday, the hop, which is the 5K, is that paid?
Yeah, so I'm just going to let her know, I think I did this meeting, and to check.
I think we just lost track.
Oh, we don't move the, spend that, yeah, we'll get to the annual.
So, still, info we'll be getting in the near future on that. There doesn't seem to be a lot on the special.
Sorry, I see.
Who, who was doing that Article 12, that we called aside?
It could be by work, this work.
Okay, we're off the special, one of the annual.
Something should have mentioned more for our studio audience, but it applies for both the special and the annual town meeting. We're now in the lottery system, we did a little bit of that, obviously we had a few articles in February, but for the special town meeting, we're on, all the articles are going to be done by lottery, we have- We have thirteen articles and they'll be picked randomly and we'll hand them one at a time. The annual town meeting, we have a whole lot more, I don't have an exact number because we've been taking articles in and out. But the first four, which are hearing the reports from the town officials and committees, the wage and personnel bylaw amendments, the elected official salaries and the operating budget are all done in that specific order. So those will be done first on Monday and we'll do those four first. After that, starting with Article five and onward, it's all lottery. Now, John Bruno is moderator, he feels that, unless we pick, I'm picking randomly, Article thirty-two. But Article thirty-two is dependent on a vote on Article thirty-one or some other article. He'll say, fine, we're going to do that article first, then get back to this one. So there may be one or two places where the articles are connected. For instance, we have one that would be acceptance of a statute that if the principal assessor has a certain certification, that principal assessor will receive a thousand dollar stipend. But there's a second article appropriating a thousand dollars. So that if that article appropriating a thousand dollars came up first in the lottery, then John would say, fine, we've got to go back to the article accepting the statute first, vote on that, then we'll go to the thousand dollars. So there are a few occasions like that, for the most part, it'll be all lottery, so.
But are we going to do, we're going to hear the reports of the.
First four go first.
Go first.
In that order, right. But, so people should be aware, even though we've numbered the warrant and the numbers aren't permanent right now because we're still using definitions like A for appropriation and B for bylaw and things like that. There are, after the first four, the articles are simply for identification only, they are not identifying the actual order that the articles will be presented at town meeting. So that if someone thinks, for instance, Article five is going to happen on Monday night, assuming we get through the first four, that's not necessarily true.
Which Monday night?
I don't think we're going to have as long a Monday night as we've had previously.
You had to go and say that, didn't you?
I did.
You did have to go and say that.
Somebody's got to be knocking on wood up there. It's for my kid, I think.
Okay, so the traditional ones, of course, as I mentioned, Article one, here are the reports of town officers committees. There's Article two, which is the wage and personnel bylaw. They will, they list the, their recommendations, this includes a one point five percent pay increase for wage and personnel employees.
All right, all right, back up to Article, reports of town officers and committees, that usually is the finance committee?
It could be anybody.
It could be any of you all or any, any committee?
Yeah.
I don't know if we've always done one, but what would we want to do?
I know, I've done it the last few years.
But yours was more specific to a particular?
No, I, we kind of, I sort of did like the state of the union, like what, not the town report itself, but just sort of highlighting the different things that's happening. And then I think I talked about some budget things that we were voting on that particular night, you know?
I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah.
It's your, it's me.
Yeah, you know me.
No.
Not very worthy.
All right, so we'll have discussions on that.
I'm sorry.
I know, I'm not worthy.
No, no, I wasn't laughing at that, I was laughing at what Troy said and then you went.
Okay, Article two, wage and personnel.
Yes.
Just briefly touch on that.
So first, the first recommendation is a one point five percent pay increase for non-union employees, just so that the board's aware, finance committee at this point really didn't take a position on it. They didn't really take a position on it all too. There, what, the discussion was very, was very specific, however, we don't have the money necessary to do this. This, we would need, this includes union and, the money needed to fund a one point five percent pay increase for union and non-union, not at the school, but all the other departments, would be about sixty-nine thousand dollars. And right now, as we talked about earlier, right now, we're about four to five thousand dollars to the good. So we don't have sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Sure to be buying a cup of coffee right now. Will they, as in the past, have certain, well, if by then, if we meet a half a percent or a one percent?
Well, it'd be up to the finance committee, wage and personnel, this is their recommendation. If the finance committee.
What's their made yet?
Wage and personnel has made its recommendations right here.
Oh, okay, it is their recommendation.
Yes, wage and personnel's, this is their article, these are their recommended changes in the bylaw.
Okay. And this is the scale they're talking about here on this page? And then the classifications? And fight apart, call fighters as well?
Yep.
Going to raise packs and racks. Others, recycling, okay, so then that was Article one.
Well, amendment one.
Amendment one.
Amendment two is that under the bylaw right now, they're supposed to review all positions covered by the plan every three years. What they've asked is that be amended so that they will do the reviews only at the request of the department head or the employee for those positions.
So originally it was every?
Three years.
Three years. Didn't, I thought we had to do it every year?
No.
Well, we were doing it within the, with our people and also.
There's an evaluation.
Oh, evaluation.
Evaluations, this, this is for a wage and salary review, is what they're talking about.
Do we do whether, oh, I see, this is for wage and personnel, that they'll look at this?
Right, so for instance, let's say position X is grade two right now, they would take a look at the position X every three years. Should it still be a grade two position, yes or no? If it should be, fine, we're looking at it alone, if it shouldn't be, maybe we look at it and say it should be grade three, maybe grade four, whatever.
Instead of waiting so long for everybody to say, has anybody evaluated?
No, we normally have a bylaw in place.
The bylaw says that it's every three years, but they're suggesting is that the bylaw be changed so it only will be done when the department head or employee requests that it be done.
I don't really like that.
And would that be every year, if they requested every year, they can do it every year?
Yes.
And wage and personnel would have to research to see if that correct?
But that's what we do, we do it in, not we, when I, I used to not carry, but every three years, we run a schedule and I thought that was a good thing because it sort of forced us to look at everything every three years to keep everything updated. And then if we had an instance that something changed within that three years, certainly they would look at it and reevaluate that position if something had changed.
All I can say is this is their recommendation.
No, I understand, but I just like the idea that we're on the schedule.
No, I want to understand too, because I remember that they were going, they could only do so many a certain year, they can get through this portion or this.
We used to do all of them in one year.
Well, I just remember when I first came on and they would just start and go through them again.
Yeah.
The, the whole issue is, is that I think it ought to stay every three years and maybe with an asterisk saying unless requested by department head for special circumstances, somebody being promoted or somebody moving down a little bit.
So the three years would still not, this three years won't be there anymore?
Correct, if this amendment is approved by town meeting, the three-year period will no longer be there. They will only be done further requested that department head or employee.
And on the other end, you could go ten years.
Both, if nobody requesting it, yes. Okay.
I think based, and I know we're not going to be discussing the whole thing, but based on the fact that we lose people due to, we're not as close as we can be to other towns are paying in certain positions, I think it needs to be looked at on a frequent basis every three years or so. So it needs to be a competition, but just around because if nobody asks for it, then we're going to get it all happen almost once, we lose people, there's a big rush.
Well, I think that's what happened, what I saw happen when it first came on, I saw that.
But that's, that's just a compliment.
Yeah, I mean, if this is a recommendation, are we going to have a recommendation as a reward or not? Something we'll have to determine. Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, next one is that they're recommending the setup of probationary period for wage and personnel employees of six months. Probationary periods will be utilized to help new employees achieve effective performance standards. Observe and evaluate the employee's conduct, performance and work habits. Nothing herein shall be construed to prevent termination of an employee prior to the conclusion of the probationary period.
I like that one.
Something they didn't have before?
No, we have nothing like that.
We never had a probationary period.
And they vary from all kinds of probationary areas. So that means anything prior to that, they would not be under, or they would be?
I don't.
You know, some benefits, I mean, you've got to be here six months for certain benefits, care, no matter what, you'll always have those benefits.
Having this does not change your benefits, it does not change anything else.
It's just that you run a review and, and after that period.
Well, you're always under review, yeah, I guess it's more a specific period to.
Right.
It's part of it is encourage department heads to take advantage of the situation and actively review the person during that six-month period. Fourth amendment is simply rewarding, we have a position called library director assistant, the library staff, the library, sorry, library director and the board trustees are asking that be the town assistant library director, so that it's clear that that person is in charge when the library director's not available, sick, vacation, whatever, for all reasons.
So that is reversing the order of the order?
Correct, it doesn't change the grade or anything like that, or the pay or anything like that, it's simply changing the title of the position. Article five is probably passed over wage, this was a request from the water department and I had heard from Keith Swanson earlier this week that having thought about it, they're going to ask for that to be passed over. I think what they were trying to do was make clear, just as we mentioned with the library, whoever might be in charge if Keith was not available, again, vacation or other reasons. And they wanted therefore to have someone have that title, is that the, sort of their table of organizations, starting with Keith, then you go down to the treatment plan operators, you wanted to eliminate confusion who's going to be in charge, but they're going to rethink this and they submit something else next year, but they're going to ask for this to be passed over.
Okay.
Number six is specifically set up a seasonal labor position and assign a wage rate equivalent to grade two step one. We've done that informally in the past in the sense that we've had seasonal laborers, but we wanted to get this on the record as to there was an actual position and what the grade and wage rate were for this position. This is generally the folks who might be more over the building committee sometimes with water and highway, that they're here for anywhere from eight to twelve weeks during, most of the time it's college students, so it's usually something like May or June to September. So they're seasonal folks, they're not, for instance, we have someone who works at the cemetery for I think seven or eight months a year, that person's not going to be considered a seasonal employee, they're part-time laborers, a different designation for that person.
Does that, I mean, if somebody keeps coming back like three years in a row, that grade step.
Will change.
Unless there's a one and a half percent or whatever percent.
Correct.
That's, it's not any, they don't have it go up in steps.
Correct.
Okay, we never had that before?
We never had it formally, no.
But that's the step we used?
That's the step we used.
Okay, so this is housekeeping?
Yeah. We've had a position called network, computer network manager before, we don't think we've actually had that position filled. So we're changing that to technical support specialist for IT, we're assigning a wage rate equivalent to grade steps, grade seven step one. As we talked about earlier tonight.
Yeah.
Inspector of animals, the wage personnel, this is an unclassified, not graded position, so it just receives a straight salary, so wage personnel is recommending that that be increased because of the increased number of hours that that person needs to do the work of various inspections.
Charlie, could you check with me, I know we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, I know that the annual inspector does do work with rabies, with the dog officer. Is there a way to pay a portion of her salary out of the dog account and not out of?
I have to check.
If you control, yeah.
So there's a, there's a need for increasing the hours and that's why we're there?
Right, I, basically it's a situation where it's more increasing the pay because the hours have increased in a sense of.
There's an hourly.
It's not an hourly position, it's a straight salary for the year, but the number of hours necessary to do the job have increased.
It's similar to what we went through with the VA, the veterans age, they've started working a lot more hours. Okay, is that good?
And then number nine is, this isn't a requirement at all, but we're done, is put a paragraph in there encouraging department heads to have their employees go to workshops or other training at least three hours every year, which is minimal when you consider that someone might be working full-time over two thousand hours. But it's a start to encouraging departments to have their employees train, whether it's workshops or webinars or anything else specific to that department or it might be more general subjects. As an example, whether it's the open meeting law or ethics or anything like that, but they can, there are workshops that can be specific to those departments. What we're trying to do is say to people, you can't just hire someone, you know, have them learn how to use a computer for a couple of hours and that's it. You invite them back to have more training than that every year.
But it also adds to the quantity of resources that we have. If you want to move somebody up or somebody retires and leaves, you need to get somebody that's trained, bless you, appropriately enough to maybe to move up and take that person's place, you wouldn't have to go outside and look.
So this is over and above any in-house or?
Correct, I know, as I mentioned, you know, I mean, if it's simply, I'm going to sit down with you and train you how to use this computer program or whatever, no, it's above and beyond that, you know?
So a minimum, there might be some, a seminar locally at some other town might be having and saying, you know, this is perfect for you.
Or even right here.
You've got to at least get these three hours, this is the place to do it, like you say, right here.
Number nine, sorry, that was number nine, number ten, we have, not a particular situation right now, but we realize that there are circumstances when someone is using sick bank hours and then June thirtieth comes. And the way the current bylaw reads is that they, on July first, they're no longer eligible to use sick bank because they haven't contributed hours. That's because, of course, they have no hours to contribute. So the language has changed slightly so that if someone is on sick leave on June thirtieth, whether it's sick bank or not sick bank hours, and they get into the next fiscal year continuing to use the sick leave, they will remain eligible for sick bank.
In other words, a person might get sick, sick on June twenty-ninth, and he's going to be off for a week, that carries over to the.
Well, it would, of course, I doubt, one would hope that they don't need to use sick bank at that point or run out of sick leave, but yeah, something like that. Probably a much longer period time, but that's the right idea.
But the provisions keep, are.
He doesn't lose his sick time based on the fact it's a new annual.
But it doesn't cost the town any further money to have somebody in the sick, remember that was part of the.
No, I understand that.
Like they don't need to hire somebody different.
The language doesn't change, this does not change the rest of the language, it simply changes who might be eligible, that's all.
So there's no sunset?
Well, it's as much sunset as in, if we, if someone, for instance, is out, we'll tip more extreme that they're out for a couple of months and that's the June thirtieth, they've been participating, they've been putting sick bank hours in every year. Then we get to July first and they're, they aren't able to do that. They are going to be ineligible if they're at that time using sick leave.
So this, there was a reset July first, this will take out the reset as far as their eligibility?
Yeah, in that, simply because if someone's on sick leave, but they can't put hours into the sick leave bank because of that, they will remain eligible for sick bank.
In the hopes that after they're not sick anymore, they come back and then we can trigger them?
That's true in any case, it's simply that, we're not trying, we're trying to avoid someone from being disadvantaged simply because of the timing of the calendar.
Right.
So that's Article two. Article three is the elected officials, the only change there is for the town clerk, the wage, this is a finance committee article, this is not a wage and personnel article, finance committee sets the salaries or recommends the salaries for elected officials and they recommend the increase for more hours for the town clerk and then therefore an increase in the salary for the town clerk.
It's a larger than normal job?
Right, I believe it's from twenty-four to thirty hours, I can check with Sandy, it'll, it's not from twenty-four to thirty-two because the math doesn't work. I think it's from twenty-four to thirty. The second line down, moderator then town clerk.
No, other than that, the rest of them are.
I think there's any of them?
Depends on, if there's any, colas, whatever you call it.
Right, colas would be above and beyond the numbers there.
So it goes from 24 to?
It would be, I believe from 24 hours to 30 hours equivalent. The salary would go from 37,853 to 47,316.
All right, good.
No, okay, but.
Yeah, I agree, but.
We discussed.
Yeah, I don't have any hearing to think about it, I'm just hearing up now.
Article four is the operating budget. We're still getting that done with Sandy to get the final version prepared for tomorrow.
And that's not it, most of the year?
Correct, because it's still, it's still, I think, speaking of.
We're not.
Yes.
All departments.
Number five is the list of revolving funds with the amounts, purposes, the board committee or department that's authorized to spend the money, the reason for spending, et cetera.
Any increases in any of these?
The only one that was increased was under, where's the wiring? Oh, yeah, inspector wages, building inspector. It's not that the building inspector gets this. This is the 80% for the plumbing, gas and wiring inspector wages. When, for instance, if the wiring inspector gets a hundred dollar permit, in $80 goes to that person, $20 goes to the general fund. Their work has increased because of the improved economy and number of building permits have gone up and therefore the also the gas wiring and plumbing permits have gone up. So that, oh, this allows for a larger expenditure in the fund, but it doesn't mean automatically that it gets our amount of money. It's simply that if we get more money in, more money will go out.
Do you think that didn't go up?
No.
What was the inspector, what was it?
It was thirty thousand dollars.
So it's twenty thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. Any other questions on five?
Sure, good.
Good. Okay. Five R is no longer tentative, that's going to bump in. This would set up another revolving fund for the board, library and trustees. They wanted to separate out their money for payments for.
Lost books.
Lost books, damaged books, et cetera, yes. And so that if someone brings in money for a lost or damaged book, that money will go to specifically to replace that lost or damaged book.
You're saying it's not going to stay or it's staying?
No, it's staying, yeah. Okay, we wrote the article as tentative because.
Okay. And nothing's changed on that?
Nothing's changed on that. That's going in.
With a lump, spending one of a thousand?
Right.
That wasn't, we didn't have that last year, right?
No, we did not have that. Library has a separate art line in that article five for their copy machines and such.
Okay.
Article six is the reserve fund. That's the same as last year, 75 from the general fund and 25,000 from the water department. Article seven is the specific provision for the addition of the full-time tenants to the fire department contract and associate costs, which I believe were about $5,000 or so.
That would have ended up that?
If, if the full-timer was the one who became the lieutenant.
Right, but the thing, the thing is that we've got, what I'm making, these are not new positions.
Right, right. So there may not be an additional cost. There may not be, because the whole thing was to open it up so that.
Right, I understand. The thing is that right now we have two full-time captains and six full-time firefighter EMTs.
Yes, plus a lot of call firefighters.
We will, whatever happens, we'll end up with, I believe what chief would like to do is two full-time lieutenants, two cap, full-time captains and four full-time firefighter.
Right, but we already have lieutenants built into, we already have lieutenants built into the call budget.
Right, but not with the call budget, but not.
Right, but if we have full-timers, we won't have call lieutenants because what he's doing is, we don't have, I think we have one lieutenant right now. So what he's doing is he's putting the test out, but he's still only going to hire one more. So we're not going to have additional lieutenants. It's just, the whole idea of this is to open it up.
I understand what you're saying, but I think I need to see the math to agree with you.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think there's any lieutenants. I don't think they're moving the lieutenants in the call.
They made, they made.
It could, it could be the call firefighters that.
You may have a call, you may have a call lieutenant who becomes a call full-time. I have a call full-time, I hear, full-time lieutenant. Again, I, if someone thinks that we're going to be able to do this with no money, I'm happy to sit down with them and work the numbers out.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's, it's marginal, but what it is is who's in charge on the scene.
Right.
And they don't, didn't have a lieutenant position and they.
Right, so it's.
That would match what the call firefighters say, hey, you got a lieutenant call, who's putting in, if you get a fire once a month.
Yeah, so he can sit down with the chief, but I don't think it's anyone.
Just so the board is aware, I've separated this out simply because I don't want any confusion between this provision and any cost of living increases for that argument or anybody else. So then we get into articles eight through 12, which are the cost of living increases for all five of the labor unions that we deal with. Right now, we don't have anything in place for those. We've donated proposals, I think we've met with one, we've told that, we've told everybody obviously our financial situation and we had promised was that there, just as we did last year, we'll have articles at town meeting. If things happen between now and May 11th, then we can reach an agreement and fund any pay increase for these folks and we can move forward. If not, we'll have to pass them over.
Who did you mean it?
We've met with firefighters so far.
And they're all reopeners?
They're all reopeners this year. There are no wholesale contract negotiations this coming year.
And I saw Sergeant Sterling the other day and he said he was going to contact you even though he's aware of the financial condition.
You haven't heard from me on the party?
Well, I didn't talk to Mike. There's like this confusion from one of the bargaining heads, but now somebody asked me if we could, I mean, with a dispatch sometime next week. And that's your daily work.
Some confusion?
I'd rather not discuss it and there's no reason.
All right, so I gotta need a tax drive Wednesday and depending on how much pain that is.
Okay, so that's eight through 12. So 13 is our annual article for the co-op extension service for $150 and appointing a director. That hasn't changed in a number of years.
For the use of a trustee for the color?
Could we do that one every year?
We have a co-op extension service. We send a person, I think it's usually because I and Azarela.
A liaison, as it was.
And we appropriate $150 every year to the co-op extension service. Okay, cable I mentioned a little bit earlier that we were going to, I need to talk to you all about this. We have two articles to deal with cable here under E1 and E2. We've been trying to find the correct funding mechanism to make sure that the money that we get from Comcast goes to chat. Here, we can't do a revolving fund according to state, that's a no-no. We could, if we were doing our own public access internally, we could do an enterprise fund, but we're not doing it internally. We've got a nonprofit corporation and we have an agreement to send money to. Another possibility is to do receipts reserved for appropriation, but according to DLR, as of this afternoon, we can't spend that money, can't appropriate that money until the money comes in. Thing is, it comes in in chunks from Comcast. So we're down to, and I'm going to have to change these two articles to reflect that, is we're going to do, in essence, be the line item appropriation. We'll set up, under these two articles, we'll set up a new line item for public access television and have an appropriation, just like we've had for the cable committee, obviously a much larger amount in this case. And then on the revenue side, when we do the recap sheet, we'll show the money coming in from Comcast as a revenue, just as licenses and fees or the indolent bills or anything like that. So those two things will balance. We won't be funding chat with anything else besides Comcast money. That seems to be the only mechanism that will allow us to send the money that we get from Comcast and send it, you know, a week later, send it back down to chat to fund their operations.
It streamlines it a little better?
Well, it streamlines it, but it also is really the only way of handling it. That, because, as I mentioned, we can't do an enterprise fund because it's not internal. We can't do a revolving fund. We, we could do receipts for appropriation, but we have to wait until the money comes in. We'd have to wait a full year and therefore then we go this year without sending money to chat, which is not what we wanted to do. So this way allow, it's, it's somewhat streamlined, but it also ends up being the only way we can do it that fulfills our obligations.
So the way we're doing it, we're not, we can't do it. It worked for the moment.
Well, for the year we're in.
The way we wanted to do it, now we find out we can't do it and now that we're on a.
We have another option luckily, which I'll rewrite these two to say that we'll, fiscal 16 appropriates a certain amount of money for this and then it will say, hereafter be a line item that will show up in the line item as a part of this 17 budget.
So similar to what we do with the schools?
Yeah, I guess it's no way, yeah.
With a reasonable school.
And they'll have a separate funding source, so it will have a letter.
Well, no, it won't have a letter because the money will show up on page three of the recap sheet as a general revenue.
Okay, okay.
If we were doing the receipts for reserved for appropriation, it would have a separate funding source, but the thing is we have to wait a full year to appropriate the money.
Okay, that's fine. But you're going to have to change it then?
Yes, I have to, I have to change E1 and E2, yes.
All right, so one of them was.
Well, basically, E1 and E2 go out the window. I have to replace that with a cable article that says, see the town votes raised, appropriate, let's say, $130,000 for the town's chair of public access or chat or whatever, and there, hereafter be a line item in the operating budget. Eight one, this is going, going in with the blanks, simply because until the state actually approves chapter 90 funding for this coming year, we don't know which of the chapters it's going to be and we don't know how much money it's going to be.
Well, we're on eight ones from east, east to east.
Appropriation.
Yeah, the letters, even in this case, originally we were going to do an enterprise fund.
All right, okay. That's not the way everyone. The chapter 90 is, we got, that might change designation?
No, there's two things. We don't know how much money we're getting.
Which we now usually do at town meetings.
Well, sometimes if the state gets its act together and approves a legislation before May 11th, then we can fill these blanks. If they don't approve the legislation by 11th, then we pass over this article.
What's the question with the chapter?
The, the chapter is the specific law, number law that they passed that year.
Well, it's not chapter 90.
So chapter one of the, well, it is chapter 90, but in this case, what it, the specific amount is tied to a specific piece of legislation and.
We need to use that now instead of?
No, okay. In, for Massachusetts legislature, each time they pass a law, they number the law.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the number that goes in there. I always thought it was just chapter 90.
What is chapter 90? Chapter 90 in that case is Massachusetts general laws over there. It's, there are black books in the back room there. The chapter is when we say the acts of such and such a year are the numbered laws. So chapter 90.
It's still there, right, right. Although ink in this thing is.
Yeah, it's fading, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Article two, we've been appropriating $150,000 of town funds for names of the town roads. This is the same amount as in previous years. Eight three is $3,500 for South Coastal County Legal Services. We've done that on an annual basis most years for a whole bunch of time. This is a citizen petition. Article four, same thing, but for the South Shore Women's Resource Center, $3,500. Article five, in this case, the board has self-put the article on for the South Shore Community Action Council.
And this is an article we used to put on?
No. Article five showed up, you may, the board may.
I remember this one. I'm just saying, I thought this used to be on and it was taken off.
No, I don't think, I don't remember there ever being.
Well, nobody was requesting?
There's two, South Shore, South Coastal and with this coming out and the women's thing was always number, because I presented.
In previous years, there have been a couple of years that the South Shore Community Action Council has gotten citizen petitions in. Most years, however, they have never done that. They, they had not done that for two or three years.
Okay.
Previous to now, though. They came in to see you all, you agreed to put the article on for them, do it by citizen petition. Okay. Article six is an additional $500,000 for the water department tower work. This would be addition to the 1.1 million that was appropriated back three years ago. And we were trying to originally do it and ran into finding out that it was going to cost us a lot more money to get the work done. They have funding sources, they won't have to, right now, we had authorized borrowing of 700,000 out of the original 1.1 million. They do not need more borrowing power, so they'll still be able to borrow the 700,000 dollars, but the additional 500,000 is coming from the water department various funds.
From revenue and?
More from the system development charges and those type of funds.
Did raise those fees, well?
I don't know about the fees. All I know is that they've got money in the bank to do this.
Because one of the items was done, the box down on.
We had a separate.
Old street, that was a separate option.
Yeah, I'm not in the door, so. Article seven, we appropriate $10,000 every year for the assessors for their triennial revaluation. So this is the initial $10,000 that goes for the cycle. The next one, which will happen as part of fiscal 17, triennial revale. Article eight is the BMI article. That's 335.
Happy birthday to you.
I don't know if that's a.
Well, you can do it free, I'm doing.
But I don't know if it's a BMI or NASCAP song.
Is this, did the finance committee have anything on this?
They're recommending it. $300 for additional patriotic and holiday banners. We have about $900 in the account. I talked to Jerry Elliott and Super Seal and they wanted to get six each of new, of the ones like this, a lot go in the telephone poles, they've been pulling apart, I guess, both of the winter and the summer patriotic banners.
Is that the cover up, the railings that haven't been painted yet up there?
No, these are for the streetlight poles.
Three lights poles.
Until we get up on the.
I know we put banners up on that railing up there.
We do that too. That's, the bears we're talking about are the ones that go up in holes. 3599 for a new printer for the board assessors, yes, that's a big amount, but it's a very big, heavy-duty printer. The previous, the one that they have dates the previous century.
Yes.
This is the one that's been running these light copies?
No.
No, they need the big, this one won't put out.
This is, this is not a copier, this is a printer.
Like the one in the back room over here?
Well, okay, there's a big print, printer, sorry, copier all the way down at the end of the hall.
In that.
Where it has the fax machine and everything like that. The printer we're talking about for the assessors is in the assessor's office. It's a printer, not a copier.
Okay. In the assessor's office.
$80,000, next one is $80,000 to purchase two new more police vehicles.
Can we get bulletproof glass in those things?
I can ask what the specs are.
Pass driver's side.
I can ask.
Are you being serious?
Yeah.
Because there's been a, if you know, there's been a rash coming up to the driver's side window in dispatching the police officers.
Eight 16, put a phone in the elevator here at town hall. That cost, number is for Jerry Elliott, that's, that's how much it would cost to put one in there. We have the box and everything. I don't know why, when the building was built, we never put one in there, but we should have one in there.
Remember, was it two years ago, something like?
Somebody got stuck in there?
No signal, no cell phone?
Well, we don't, there's, there are whole sorts of possibilities. One, as you said, somebody might not have a signal, somebody might not have a cell phone. We want to make sure, and it would look pretty bad if we end up with somebody trapped there for the weekend.
So this is a one, one-time expense?
Right, any, any operating expense would have, would be in the telephone budget.
So it's a one-time.
And what it would be doing, what we would set it up is basically, you pull, you get the phone and it automatically brings down to dispatch. Eight 17 is for computer equipment for the library. This would be staff. Eighteen is for our OPEB, we try, or try and put money aside for post-deployment benefits. Not a lot, but.
We're going to have, we have that?
Yeah, number 18 to 35,000.
Yeah.
Yep. Eight is for computer equipment for the elementary school. One is for computer equipment for the elementary school.
That's not, my, what was the, is this the article we've always put in there or is that?
No, we've had different amounts for different purposes there.
Yeah, but there was one that was, that was all we always did every year. And then we found out it's all on a projection screen, so.
Well, we had, for basically, it was very unspecific except for computers, basically. And yes, that's what we found out, so they're being very specific here about how the money would be used in this case.
So, how much was the amount that we were doing before?
Uh, ranging from fifteen to twenty-five thousand a year.
Yes, mostly around fifteen, but last year we bumped it up because there was some true needs there and so this year, this is what is needed.
So there's something will be more of what we'll be contributing every year?
Well, not necessarily, but.
Is that what you're saying, is this a one-time?
No, I assume that's good, the, the school department's always gonna need new computers or associated materials.
So rather than going through the whole house like the, what do they call those at the high school? They wanted to get those notebooks. That a one-time, take care of all, this will just, this will update them. Like the ones we have for five to five minutes for school hour and.
Right, you know, we buy turnout gear and radios and pages for the fire department every year and we buy a new, some more every year and the same thing for the school.
There's no computers this year unless printers and, um, switches and air conditioning.
Oh, so this is more specific to what?
Yes.
So this will vary now?
They will specify what they're buying and.
Rather than just a general?
Correct. Eight twenty-one is recycling truck. Um, I, unless we have, we find some more money, the wording that says an associate recycling receptacles that will be taken out or make the motion at town meeting will just be down to the trucks since it doesn't appear we have any money to buy the additional receptacles.
That was the question I had with him before, so.
So why are we getting a truck that doesn't do the reception? We can just still do it the same way?
The truck is much larger in terms of its carrying capacity. That means fewer trips up to Avon to drop off the recyclables, which will mean a savings in time. The truck can be used with the larger receptacles. We don't have enough money to buy everybody a new receptacle.
In the town.
But it will still work.
Yes, it will work better than the current operation we've got.
Yes, it's still gonna work with the receptacle, we talked about it in capital planning Monday night. We talked a little bit about, there were some residents that heard about it and wanted to purchase their own and so, Sandy's gonna talk to recycling to see if there's some kind of a flyer or somehow we can get the information out that, you know, a new one will not be required, however, if you would like one for your own personal, for the use in ease, then, um, you know, this is where you can purchase it and then we can sell for two dollars the sticker that says Halifax Recycling. So we're thinking about different ideas, but the truck will still work with the actual, um, containers that people have right now. It's just not as efficient.
Is that, is that, is the truck gonna be single-streaming?
Yes, yeah, we'll go on single.
I'm just, you know, I know this is gonna cut down a lot of trips and I, I just don't see how we cannot. What is the employee gonna be doing with all these hours we're gonna be saving? I'm still not.
Well, didn't you have the staff come in here?
Yeah, we, we did, and then part of that was the learning curve involving those receptacles.
Well, I guess the thing to do would be to have the staff come back in to continue that conversation sometime in April. Because, and I wasn't there at the meeting, obviously, I was sick. Uh, if I don't, you know.
We did have that conversation, yes.
According to them, maybe you could still use the same receptacle that you have, only they're larger receptacles that they were gonna bring down. You'd have to separate the receptacles to evolve in one container.
I think that that was to see how it went as well within the year.
But it, it, there will be no added time to it because we still gonna have to use this, you know, to get off and remove the receptacles. Whereas with the.
With the bucket, eat, eat?
With the buckets on the receptacles, it would have been all easier.
The major, yeah, for, in terms of physical labor, how many receptacles would be easier? In terms of the time savings, it's probably gonna take about the same amount of time using the current receptacles as the larger ones. Simply because you gotta position the truck, count the car, go out and grab a receptacle, or something like that.
Yes, you just don't have to drive to, to drop off the recyclables. And again, the conversation was, we would see how much savings time there would be over the next year. That's a very difficult thing to predict right now.
I think the trips, they were cut, there was no specifics on, I can't remember the specifics on. We're making so many trips now with the truck we have and we're making this amount of trips with the new truck.
She estimated hours saved to be somewhere around eight, I think. I don't have my notes with me, but.
A week?
I believe so, but again, I, I think the discussion was, this is gonna, besides, we need a truck. This is gonna be an easier thing for the residents for single streaming. We, there is potential savings for gas, obviously, from back, going back and forth. It could be a savings in hours, certainly there's, you know, a savings in process for time. And that it would be very difficult to change the hours until we've gone full year of knowing what the actual savings.
I mean, I don't see how we're not gonna save hours. In the meantime, what will that position be doing with those downed hours?
Well, I think it's up to the, the, um, highway supervisor to, um, pop the door to figure that out at this point.
And that truck won't last another year?
No.
Not the way it's been breaking down. I, I don't, I've had to put up notices several times during this fiscal year.
People are very upset.
I mean, I didn't hear what was the problems, whether it was, that's why I was asking.
Okay, I mean, this was something that the board anticipated and has been told it's coming up. And that's why we've had money set aside specifically for this.
Yeah, no, I, I was hoping that myself, at least to get half the containers is better than no containers. I mean, there's, there's no money at all to get any of the containers.
We've decreased the cost of the recycling bill, so we're not, and we've also lost revenue on some of the items that we were.
Yeah, but the bag program's been bringing in.
Again, we, we lowered the recycling fee, so we're bringing in less. We're also bringing in less on, I forget what, was it newspaper?
Yeah, the papers, the cardboard and the papers.
And so, you know, we are getting by, but because we're not really building up that account any longer. You know, we're, we were, but we, we haven't in the last year because of those two factors. At some point, if we wanna buy, um, the receptacles, we're gonna have to think about increasing the recycling fee or charging.
Well, the bagging tag I know was, we were increasing and it was increasing, it wasn't increasing at the level it was when the fee was at fifty.
Exactly, yes, but again.
I don't think that's, I think the problem was is that we're, we're now on recycling, but we're paying more for people to take the material where they used to pay us, you bring it to them. So now we're paying for material to be taken, cardboard and other pieces that normally wouldn't have been, we would have been paid in the past. And that's where the difference is coming from.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors in there. There certainly is a lot of factors. But I would hope, I thought the money, there was some money in there to get some of the recycling.
There's not sufficient money to do that.
Not the whole town, but.
Well.
You mean.
Unless the board's going to make a decision about which part of the town is going to do this.
Yeah, we're looking at an article for, we were gonna be talking about.
I mean, the board, the board has deliberately decided to not have increases in the charge for recycling. Because the board as a whole felt that the fund balance was too high and that we should lower the cost as much as possible for the town's residents. The resulting decrease in the balance is the result of that. And we don't have enough money to do everything we want to do. If we had left the fee up, we would. The board decided not to do that.
You, you gonna go back and blame it on the reduction in the fees?
It is.
That's one, that's one of the reasons.
It's basic math.
It's, it's one of many, yes, it's, it's one of many reasons.
Right.
It's one of many. It's not the, the reason.
You, you only got, you only got a fund balance for more revenue or less expenses.
Yeah, but the account itself kept going up every year. It just didn't go up as much every year as it has in the past. And some of that also was what we're getting paid for.
But we also.
I'm asking, I'm just asking the question, what else is left in that fund balance beyond the twenty, the two hundred and sixteen?
When I talked to Sandy about this, we'll have about twenty to thirty thousand dollars left in the fund balance.
And we shouldn't be touching that for any of the recyclables. The containers, the containers.
If the board wants to, I, I think, I think, if you're gonna have that discussion, I would recommend that you bring in the recycling corps in, Sandy and the highway surveyor in for a joint because you went, you know, I thought you all had that discussion a couple of weeks ago.
We did. Yeah, we had it, but we was, there was still, we didn't know where we stood, but A is a grant. B can, would we consider maybe only getting half the, the recyclable buckets? Um, like you said, you weren't there either, so.
But all I can say.
These are just questions I'm asking.
Well, I'd recommend that the board, if they want to continue that conversation, do that at another meeting, having the people who have that information here.
Are you suggesting that the town is only gonna provide half of its residents with recycled containers? If that's the way, I'm asking Mike, because that's what it sounds like to me right now. So, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm suggesting if we can only, if we can only afford half right now, the following year, we could have the other half. Not everybody uses the recycling right now. I mean, if you drive down the street on recycling day, you're gonna see a batch of three or four and then you're gonna see a batch of, you know, not everybody uses the recycling. And we're encouraging it, but, you know, not to have any, I'm trying to see if there was some ground, we can get some, at least started this year and then some start, you know, make up for it next year with the rest of them.
That's why.
And continue using the ones that we have.
That's why I said earlier, Sandy and we're working, capital planning is working, looking at the fund balance, looking at different options. That's, we're still looking at it, but right now we have an article for a truck that we need.
The reason why I brought it up is because the article would have included the buckets if we had the money at the same one.
Right, and Charlie said, what he expects to happen is that at some point from now until town meeting, we will determine if we'll need to amend that at town meeting four.
Well, that's why I was asked the question, is why don't we have it in front of us?
Yes. Can we move on, please?
And I know it was gonna get so heated up. That was not my intent.
Okay, I'd like to move on, please.
It's a little warm, isn't it? So article twenty-two, we have not had the town's insurance policies reviewed since I've been here. We need someone who is not one of our agents, not one of our insurers to review their policies in addition to help write bid specs so we can go out and completely bid these policies. I'm not capable of doing that. I mean, I have a little bit of knowledge, but not a lot, not enough to make decisions on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget item like this where someone who does this as an everyday business would. And I don't have, I'm going to be getting quotes from various firms to get this work done. The expectation is that the town meeting approves it, then we'll have this work done during the summer. We'll go out to bid late in the fall for everything else besides workers' comp and get quotes in January for the renewals in February. My hope is, at the very least, is to make sure that if we do have holes in our policies and coverages that we don't need or should have, we could make those adjustments. The other part is through the competitive bidding process, possibly will start saving the town some money on our insurance policies. But, um, we're talking, as I mentioned, something we're spending about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year on these. And we need someone from outside to take a look at this and make sure that we're spending our money properly.
And who would they be?
This would be an outside, not, or not Cushman, our current insurers. It would be an outside firm that specializes in this type of work. And I would be getting, you know, I would be getting quotes from a variety of firms to do that. There are firms that do this, that's what their livelihood is.
So we have any idea on that?
No, I have no idea. I mean, I would expect maybe ten thousand, something on that order.
And that's something we'd be doing annually?
No.
Or it's a more of a one-time?
Right.
It sounds like it's reasonable. I mean, Charlie does a lot of stuff for us here, but if he doesn't feel comfortable in doing those type of things, then why is that we look someplace else? We do it for the wage and personnel, we've done it for planning board when they had to go out for consulting to do certain things. Why not here?
Eight twenty-three is purchasing a new furnace for the town hall. That's from the building committee. Uh, ninety-eight hundred dollars for A twenty-six for windows for municipal and school building, committee water department building across the street. Five thousand to do work on the aerial man lift. I'm sure you've seen what we have. That needs repairs.
Is that our lift?
It's a town's lift.
It is a town's lift?
Yes.
Has anybody looked at getting a new one? I mean, is this thing?
Well, I guess the building committee thinks it's reasonable to, that five thousand would do us better than going outright and buying a new one.
Well, I mean, I just see repairs on this often and I know that it's aging. So they would know whether that, okay.
Um, eight twenty-eight is to spend twenty-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars to purchase an iPad and associated software for the building committee. This would allow Jerry and the other staff members to do work, do record-keeping and associated work as they're going around to the buildings rather than having all, you do handwritten notes or bring everything back to the administration building across the street. There are various software programs and such that can set up schedules, billing and everything else, take photographs of, um, various projects, what needs to be done, what has been done. So these things exist.
That's an expensive iPad.
Well, it's not, as I mentioned, it's not just the iPad, it'd be associated software for that. Uh, A twenty-nine, um, this would be for the, uh, town hall parking lot to seal coat, fill the cracks and straight the parking lots here at town hall.
So you already combined?
The, my article I took out, just, just one, and left the building committees, since they actually put one in. My concern was if I didn't put something in, it wouldn't be an article. They put one in, didn't need my article. Uh, paint the base ceilings for the fire station for ninety-five hundred dollars, that's a thirty. A thirty-one is to replace the flooring at the Halifax Highway Barn at sixty-three fifty.
Placed the what?
The flooring. Uh, article A thirty-one.
Okay.
Sixty-three fifty to replace the flooring at the Halifax Highway Barn.
What flooring is that?
Uh, that's the carpeting, the areas that are carpeted in the rooms closest to the road.
But they're not gonna do carpeting?
Right, they're, they're gonna put panels in instead. They're easier to clean.
No, they're actually, I believe, the latest is they're gonna do reprocesses.
Okay, then I'll have to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna refit, they had originally talked about doing individual squares for carpeting and then, I think at capital planning, I think it was Mel Conroy brought up, um, there's a treatment that you can do to the cement floor that smooths it and it makes it easier to clean and it's very aesthetically clean.
Let's absorb it.
I'll, I'll ask what, I'll get the specifics.
So it's not, it's not the offices, it's?
It is the offices.
Yeah, it is, it's all offices, yeah.
Uh, thirty-two, replace radios and pages over the Halifax Fire Department for five thousand.
Is that an annual?
Yes, that's an annual article, too. Same thing with A thirty-three, fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand to purchase turnout gear for the fire department. Uh, A thirty-four is purchase ice rescue equipment for the department for forty-seven fifty. A thirty-five is purchase new monitoring defibrillators for the Halifax Fire Department, that's thirty thousand. I believe those are ones that meet the new standards and requirements and requirements.
That's a complete replacement?
Yes.
Or, yeah, for both ambulances or one?
I think it could just be one, actually. I think it's just one, but it's, um.
It says a new monitor and defibrillator.
I will find out.
Yes.
So the, and the one before that wasn't an annual?
No.
No, we don't buy ice rescue equipment every year.
Okay.
Eight thirty-six are eight automated, automated external defibrillators for the fire and police departments. These are the ones that go with the other vehicles.
Yes, and they're so old that they can't be serviced any longer.
That's fifteen thousand dollars.
What happened to eight thirty-seven?
Um, we took a number of articles out and didn't do any renumbering.
All right, I was just wondering. So there's separate defibrillator, fifteen thousand?
Yes, because one's for the ambulance and these are for like, each cruiser has one, um.
Oh, it's police?
Different vehicles, yeah, those are the, those are the, um.
For police and fire.
Ones that are in the little yellow containers, yeah.
So they're for both the pilots?
Yep.
How many of them are there? How many of them are there?
I think there's like, yeah, yeah.
Says eight?
Yeah, each cruiser, each chief has one.
Oh, eight. Looking for the infinity eight.
Eight, um, eight thirty-eight is for the new fire truck. The commit, the capital planning committee working with the fire department and the finance committee decided that the best way of doing this, obviously, we don't have 765 sitting in the coffers, that's, so that got struggling. The lease cost and the borrowing costs are approximately the same these days. It used to be that leasing, you ended up paying, in essence, a much higher interest rate. The lease companies have figured out that they can't compete on that basis, and so their costs are now the same as the borrowing costs. So, what the recommendation is to do a lease purchase for five years for the new truck.
So, it's basically financing. There won't be any balloon payment at the end. There's no way in any given year that we foresee that we would have $765,000 to purchase an engine. You put it off for a couple of years, it's needed, and with the support of the finance committee and capital planning and the town accounting conversations with Charlie and the police chief, I mean, the fire chief, this is the best option that we have.
We've never leased before.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, it's more of a, a financing. I mean, we even talked about.
We're hoping for all these purchased, but again, the thing is, we've, we could borrow the money.
Yes.
But we'd be paying the same interest rate to do that as we would for the lease purchase.
Right, and we even talked about, you know, perhaps doing a one-year capital override, to see how much that would cost, and, you know, we definitely, yeah, which would be too much. So, this is, you know, we're gonna put it forth to the town meeting, and it's up to them to prove it and get support.
So, it's not better for us to borrow it, it's better for us to lease it?
It really, it's needed, it's the same.
So, I mean, if it's the same money. So, now you're dealing with a lease company versus a?
Bank.
A bank. So, is a lease company better to deal with?
Well, the lease company, well, in this case, the lease company is work, the lease company usually is working with the outfit that in fact is manufacturing the vehicle. So, it's basically a combo. You're buying, you're getting the vehicle from the combination of the lease company and the equipment manufacturer.
So, it's not the same, it's not the traditional lease that you would think you or I would go on lease a car?
No, no.
No, it's, even though it says lease, I think that's where you might get some little confusion.
But there won't be a balloon payment. We will own it after five years.
Hopefully, it's still running well and in good condition.
Yeah, it's a much safer vehicle for firefighters.
Where does the one we got go?
It can be traded in.
And that's part of it?
No. I don't think it's, I don't think it's in. I think we could only get 20,000 for it. Because it's the ladder that's moving away.
Oh, it's the ladder?
Yeah, the ladder.
I thought it was the engine.
This is gonna replace the ladder and the engine.
Yeah, but they were, they were gonna hold the engine in reserve.
As reserve, yeah.
So, the number of vehicles won't change, but the vehicle that they're getting rid of will be the ladder truck.
Yeah, because this is gonna have a ladder.
Aerial.
Yes.
So, we're getting a new engine, we'll come with a ladder, we're getting rid of the, our engine.
We're getting rid of the ladder.
Our ladder, it's only worth 20.
Who's on first? I don't know who's on, sorry.
It's only worth 20, and the other one I'm gonna keep in a reserve.
Yes.
So, the number of vehicles won't change. The ladder will disappear.
Really? It'll drop and?
No, right.
Okay.
Eight thirty-nine, and this article's appeared before also, but it's a separate article as opposed to a line item. We've done this way before, 7,500 for additional hours for the Concom Secretary for weapons protection work. That gets funded from the weapons fees.
So, this is separate from that?
It's separate from the line items, yeah.
These are additional hours?
Yes.
Because it's a separate funding source.
And what are the hours?
I could find out how many hours.
It says additional hours for conservation.
It, it, this is, they're not getting any more hours than they got last year. This is just how we fund it, because this is a different source of funding.
What says additional hours?
Right, if I'm in the on what's in the line.
What's in the, what's in the line item?
But not a different additional hour?
I can, I, you know, I'll, I'll confirm how many hours between the two sources we're spending for the year we're in, and then confirm how many hours will be fiscal sixteen.
Because I know it was brought up if they could help with any of the, the Monpotsipon Working Group, to help chase stuff down. Remember that discussion we had with them? And that has nothing to do with?
No.
No, Concom at this point hasn't done anything on that, along those lines. Our new computer for Pope's Tavern, $15,000, eight forty-two.
Does that include software?
I would hope so. It's from the council on aging. I don't know. It should. I mean, I've been able to buy new ones with the necessary software for that price.
Are these in line with what we have?
Again, I would hope so.
I mean, who takes care of the computers once they come in?
I'll end up, I'm, I'll end up having to be covering that, or the IT person is gonna be covering that.
Just gonna say, Charlie, let's borrow heads.
Well, I mean, because you got the, you got the, you got the laptop, you know, when you buy any stuff. Do you have any say here?
Yes.
Recommendations on what they purchase to try to mainstream it? You gonna stretch? Can we take a break?
Charlie, no, 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 no. We're gonna switch chairs, because I have his chair and Mike and Marshall.
Okay. How'd that happen?
I warmed this up for it.
Um, yeah. Eight forty-three is a proposed phone system for Pope's Tavern, Halifax Council on Aging. They need additional phones there, and they want to do a better job of having the phones interconnected with each other.
Can we just do one of those last year? Oh, those are lines. We did lines last year.
I don't know if we did lines last year, but I know this is what they're looking for this year. There may be one or more lines that would be an additional as part of the new phone system there.
Well, the second one says they want to interface a network for Pope's Tavern and Halifax Council.
Correct.
So, hooked together.
So, it's eight forty-four for computer network interfacing and backup system for Pope's Tavern, none of which they have right now there. Eight forty-seven is 10,000 to install new windows at the recycling center. The windows that are there are basically hole coverings. They don't do anything more than cover the walls.
The winds. Is this the office?
Yes, and the other parts of the building.
Very windy in there.
Uh, B one is the request by the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to establish a stabilization fund. The town voted against this last year. They asked, they are, but they resubmitted again.
Okey-dokey.
B two is, as I mentioned, the zoning bylaw change for the flood claims, so at this point, I'm gonna ask that the board send this to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation at town meeting. So, you'll see.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, B three is for accepting the senior work-off program that you had originally talked with council on aging about.
What are we on Bs now?
We're on B for bylaw.
Okay.
Troy, answer.
Didn't you say that it was coming off?
No. The only thing that came off was the appropriation. We had talked to Department of Revenue, who said that the $1,500 would come out of the overlay reserve for payments and exemptions.
Oh, okay, wasn't the article itself?
No, that's why you notice goes from B three to B five.
Oh, I see.
So, B four was the appropriation of 1,500 dollars.
Did they clarify on, you know, how much?
That's gonna be up to the board, and my recommendation, I know that Barbara Brenton had written me late today, and I think she's gonna hope to come in to see you either on the 14th or 28th to go over the specifics of the program, since obviously that's gonna be asked at town meeting. So, at some point, before you go to town meeting, you're going to want to be specifying, which I think you've reviewed with Barbara, how many people, what the, how much per person told us that type of thing. How do you work out which people are gonna be eligible?
I thought probably was two, that you can get a tax break if they work for the town.
Correct, that's this program.
But I think she wanted to start off with X amount of people, and then?
She wanted to start off, she wanted, for this year, start two people, 750 each.
And once this is passed, then that would, we wouldn't be asking voters to vote on this again.
No, but.
We would be voting on changes.
You yourself would make changes.
Changes on, well, if she's now saying, oh, it's working well, we wanna have four people.
Well, then it would be the board's decision whether you want to increase the size of the program.
So, she'll know more specifics?
Well, she's, yeah, she'll come either in on the 14th or the 28th to talk with you, to work out specifics that would be presented at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, B five and B six are connected to Two Rivers Farm subdivision. It's a subdivision where, in essence, the developer has walked off, without doing the remaining part of the infrastructure work. However, in this case, we've got a bank book.
Yes.
Now, we weren't just holding on to lots, we actually have real money. But to use that, we have to do two things. We have to accept a statute that I've outlined here in B five, and then B six would appropriate that money that's still sitting in the bankbook to, to, we're hoping as much of the work as possible to bring the roads up to.
You have me at B.
And do we have enough to bring that up to pod?
Um, our consultant for the planning board thinks so, yes.
Who's the consultant?
Uh, Merrill.
Oh, okay.
B seven, this came up when we were dealing with site plan review. We had the restaurant, I think, in the industrial park, or the chicken or turkey place that was gonna be in there.
Yeah, a drive-through?
I don't know if it was a drive-through. I think, I don't know if it was a drive-through, but what the, what you all mentioned at that time was that, in fact, that's the other one that was going there, was that you wanted to be on the mailing list for copies of the plans when they came in for site plan review. So, what this would do would be to add the board selectmen to the list of boards and committees that would receive copies of plans for site plan review. We're increasing the number of copies to nine, rather than eight, that the applicant would have to bring in, and what I would recommend is the board also vote to send this up to the planning board for hearing and recommendation at town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
B nine, the e-cigarette laws in the state of Massachusetts are ending up to be a very much of a patchwork. There are some state regs, the attorney general's coming up with regs, various cities and towns are doing bylaws and regs. What I'm asking is that they be prohibited for use within municipal buildings, just like we granted tobacco products, and also within 100 feet of the entrances. This isn't prohibiting someone from being on the town hall green, or out on the playing fields, or anything from having any cigarette.
We've been in a playing field, even though we have no smoking.
Well, if the board wants to extend it to that, that's fine. My interest immediately was just doing the municipal buildings and the entrances.
Well, I would think that we would wanna do it anywhere we could have it smoking, which is the field as well and the park. I don't know. I might be wrong.
I'm, I'm against it. There's no science that it's detrimental. I mean, you might as well ban dehumidifiers in the building where you're at it.
I would hate to.
Because you can add things to that.
I would hate to have someone come in here and deliberately go into my office, and I'd have to have a meeting with them, and they're smoking any cigarette.
Well, common courtesy, you ask anyways, and, and some people. Some common courtesy wouldn't just go ahead and do that.
I read an article that says it does.
That's, that's the arguments we seem to be having lately, is fictitious, not us, I'm saying, that I've been hearing a lot on the news, is what if this happens, we need to do something about something that hasn't happened. We're doing a lot more and more and more stuff, and, and there's no science in this, and it's, it's, even to watch some of the old movies, if, hey, you mind if I smoke? They're gonna ask. They're not just gonna come in and, and do it.
But I thi, I think that banning smoking in public places is something that has been around for a while, and I don't think we're going out of line by.
Yeah, smoking, but, I, this, to me, the science is.
It's smoking. It has nicotine in it. The smoke's still coming out.
Not always.
It has nicotine in it, it's the same thing.
Not always.
I read an article that they can be more dangerous than regular.
Well, anyway, I think if, I think you've been discriminatory if you banned somebody to smoke a cigarette for smoking a place in that one East block. It's, it's the same thing. It serves the same purpose.
May I ask you, Charlie, have you done any research to see if any other town has done similar?
All I've read is articles of other communities, just, it's a patchwork. I don't know.
Okay, so this is not something, yeah, so you've, this is something that you've looked at, other towns are doing it.
Again, it's a patchwork. I'd have to go town by town and find out exactly what they've done or not done.
But there's some towns and places, some sort of something. I, 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 I would support it. Again, my only question is if whether or not we wanna expand it to the other areas in our town that we permit, we prohibit smoking, and I don't know how. I don't know if that's too over the top, but. No, it's fine. If you think it's too over the top, we can start with at least town hall.
I, I don't know that it's too over the top. I can think of it more, but I, I look at it in terms of electric cars and engine combustion. You still have to have a muffler, and you still have to have all the things to prevent the exhaust from going out. Smoking e-cigarette, smoking cigarettes, the same difference. It serves the same purpose, satisfaction of the individual who needs to do this. If you're gonna ban one, ban them both, because it's discriminatory.
Okay.
Because I can just see a person coming up saying, well, I hate to smoke e-cigarettes, smoking cigarettes, same thing, nicotine coming out. I think you put yourself into a bad situation.
There's no science that it's even the same relations. That's my opinion, anyways.
Charlie, is it too complicated for you to add it in? I'll answer that question.
Well, I mean, you, yep, sorry.
If we're talking about banning it on, in the parks and on the playing fields, it sends a message to our children if we allow e-cigarettes on, in those areas. Personally, I don't think it sends a great message if you allow it.
I don't know what that message is we're sending. I mean, these are, the e-cigarette's intent is to get people off of cigarettes. It's not introducing the cigarettes, not introducing a product to do this, it's keeping them from a product.
Right, but right now?
That's the way it's came out, and I think some of the messages that I've been getting is, it's, it's more reactionary than it's actual cause and effect. That's just my opinion.
But if cigarette smoking right now is banned from those areas, and, and you're not considering banning the e-cigarettes too, then you're, you're, the message that you're gonna send to the youth in the town is, this is okay, but this is not. That's the message that it's, it's gonna come across.
That's not the message that I'm interpreting, that we're sending. I mean, that's just my, my thoughts at this point in time.
Well, kids will tend to see what you're actually doing, and they use that as the message. So, if you're allowing something, you're saying it's okay.
Well, let's, let's just come up with something that say, you know, we're allowing cars to drive in the parking lot, and that's dangerous, so we shouldn't allow the cars to drive in the parking lot, because it's dangerous of people walking in. You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's.
Well, if the board wants to propose the article, or the board can have me propose the article, I'm fine either way.
I mean, it sounds like you already got two anyways, so.
I, I have no problem with the board proposing that, depending on the vote of the board.
I will second that motion. Is that the motion?
I, I think as public petitioners, we need to be sending positive messages out, and they'll decide whether they think it's right or not at town meeting.
I will second, I will second that.
And does the board wish to extend the prohibition to the playing fields and parks?
I think any place they have public gatherings, especially if it's on town property.
I would limit it to town properties for playgrounds. Wherever we have, we prohibit as a town on our property, the use of cigarettes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No?
B ten, this is on the trailer permits. Right now, we have a complicated setup where Tom Millie, so the building inspector approves the initial permit, comes to you all, and you all want a public hearing, you do that. Then, without a public hearing, that person can come back in, ask for a renewal. Then, after that, they have to come back and have another public hearing. What I wanna do is simply set it up that you, it's only one type of thing. After it goes through Tom, it comes to you, you hold a public hearing, you vote on the permit, and if that person wants to come back, then we just go through the permit hearing process again. It's not the back and forth type of thing.
So, it's cutting it down?
It's cutting it a step down, yeah, in the sense of if someone wants the permit renewed after going through Tom and your initial permit, they simply come back and start the hearing process again with you.
Good?
Okay, B thirteen and B fourteen are, as I mentioned, I talked a little bit about the example of the Board of Assessors, with the principal assessor, if that person gets certification under state law, except that statute under B thirteen, they'll get a $1,000 stipend. Then, B fourteen would be the appropriation of the $1,000 stipend. B fourteen?
Yep.
B fifteen, um, I've never been able to find out why we have set up the junk dealers and collectors licenses to expire on April thirtieth. What I'm suggesting, just to alleviate the complication of having two different dates for renewals, is to move that to the same date that we renew all the other licenses, which is December thirty-first.
I would say that's proposed by the board's department.
Wha, what's the differ, what's the...
Just simply that we handle everybody else's renewals on, on December thirty-first, there's no reason to have a different renewal date. It simplifies life in our office. So, for, and what will happen is if the board renews any licenses this month, this bylaw won't apply until, because...
Yeah, I have a vote of that.
So, that if you approve licenses on the twenty-eighth, then...
Next round will still be the...
It will be April, next, April will be expiration date, then they'll expire in December sixth, uh, December of twenty sixteen at that point.
I'll make a motion that we present this article at town meeting.
Second.
It's not by the finance committee?
No.
Oh, super recommendation. Any further discussion?
It's proposed by the board, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sixteen is the right to farm bylaw, seventeen is the agricultural commission bylaw.
Was it right to farm, wasn't that kind of put on hold?
No, that's a, that's a reservation that you had last...
Yeah, I thought the board of health...
The board of health doesn't get to put it on hold. Barns and stables are them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you'll notice in the bylaw, there is no mention whatsoever of barn-stable products. We have the election article, and then also we have question one to non-binding, which will be being worded based on what the board just said earlier tonight. And they said they would, would in fact put a narrow lot of farming under the umbrella.
I don't think, I don't think they...
The wording covers it, certainly.
It's right, it's farming!
It's an agricultural product. That's all we got.
Anybody else? I moved that we adjourned.
So, we're seeing everybody next Tuesday, regular meeting, seven-thirty. I'm getting to PM, I feel like I live with these people. Anything else? Have you covered everything?
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna go back and see if the plot will hop, see how it...
Thank you all, I hope you had a wonderful weekend, pass all the...